That's why we are called the Republic of South Africa.
So it's called a boy, I'm a daughter, let me get a call on a back a little now, a video, a cora, a public, yeah, Africa, Bora.
But within this state
Me, what they have, but I miss a push, so, eh, no.
Of the Republic of South Africa, we have what we call three arms of the state.
Yeah, eh, public, yeah, Africa, Bora, Renali, my partner, Alima, Raro, cause I recall that they, really bizarre, he might partner, Alma, Raro, a poor.
One is the executive, which is government.
Yeah, and that, yeah, but could you tamaka, eh, link, who so?
Is led by the president.
Be on a, eh, tell us, pele, yeah, mo, president.
Who has been elected by the people.
Yo, eh, no, oh, tropile, eh, you, lo, na.
The second one is the legislature.
May, ah, bo, be, did you, quote, la, teo, mo, la.
Which is parliament.
Eh, link, Parliament.
Elected by the people.
Eh, eh, tropile, eh, you, ba.
The third one
Yeah, Bora.
Is the, eh, what is this, eh? The judicial.
Eh, gee, eh, the part, that, ah, wa, crude.
Which is led by, eh, the chief justice.
Lele, eh, tell us, eh, pele, gee, wa, kid, eh, mo, ho, lo.
Now, these three are interrelated, but they are not the same.
Eh, the car, lo, Zeno, Zeta, Ro, D, eh, T, Am, Isana, Mo, Ho, Sen, can, me, ha, di, twan.
Legislature makes laws.
Eh, back, quote, la, teo, mo, la, oh, ba, ta, ya, me, la.
Government implement the laws.
Who so, eh, Zena, me, la, out, the, so.
And the judiciary ensures that there, the laws are upheld and followed.
Me, ba, wa, crude, eh, bon, eh, ba, eh, like, choco, eh, me, la, eh, yah, you, go, eh, loa.
The reason why I'm explaining this is that most, eh, times where we go, people treat us as government.
Le, back, a la, ho, ba, ke, talosha, di, lo, Zeno, ke, kal, ba, a la, ho, eh, ho, eh, lo, ho, eh, mo, eh, Tama, yeah, and, eh, ba, tu, eh, eh, di, ripu, so.
And when they are not happy with government.
Me, ha, basa, it, um, eh, la, Se, eh, kaha, pu, so.
They blame us.
Ba, choy, ah, Ron, a, mo, la.
We can only be blamed for not holding government accountable.
Eh, Ron, ah, rega, choy, ah, mo, la, to, fela, can, a, ya, ho, bo, eh, re, sa, di, lo, who, pu, so, is, eh, kare, eh, ma, i, kare, eh, lo, eh, di, di, lo, sa, yo.
For their actions and inactions.
Can, a, ya, di, di, lo, sa, bo, eh, ho, eh, sa, ho, sa, di, Re, Se.
Okay, let's go back to the bill.
Mar, boy, eh, la, gua, mo, la, chomo.
I did say the bill is upstream petroleum development bill, resources bill.
Ki, like, a, talosha, yeah, nah, ho, eh, mo, la, chomo, oh, no, war, na, ki, mo, la, chomo, wa, to, ka, fa, to, eh, ya, di, di, Ri, Su, ah, sa, petroleum.
I'm aware that, eh, there is, some of you have been workshop by our team, but I just want to take you through few things that will make this process easy.
Gee, is a, choco, eh, ho, eh, ba, a, lo, na, you, le, la, ko, pa, na, le, su, chapa, sa, ro, na, so, si, ni, si, ki, la, ho, lo, si, di, mu, se, ta, ka, ka, eh, no, me, le, fa, chun, se, jalo, ki, ba, ta, ho, lo, na, ya, di, in, cha, ho, lo, di, le, ma, lo, ya, na, fe, la.
Now, let's start with the definition of upstream and downstream.
Yeah, no, ah, is, mo, le, link, ka, talosha, yah, ho, eh, Pula, mo, ho, le, ya, di, sa, my, so, Zeno, ha, di, sa, Zidi, sa, my, Siwa.
Upstream is the exploration and production of crude oil and natural gas.
Eh, har, bu, a, ka, upstream, ho, ta, ribua, fa, no, fa, ka, ho, eh, Pula, eh, ha, di, mineral, eh, Zeno, eh, 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 no, ho, di, ka, va, ta, sa, ha, mo, mo.
Downstream is when you have extracted and you are now developing for delivery to people who can use it.
Yeah, no, downstream, eh, oh, na, ke, har, sa, ter, choti, le, di, mineral, eh, Zeno, eh, eh, ready, Zena, mo, eh, bo, eh, ya, ka, di, zom, pe, lo.
Now, I want to explain this because I want you to understand where black people have been playing a role and where big companies have been monopolizing the prod, the, 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 the exploration.
Yeah, no, ki, ba, ta, ho, talosha, si, no, si, eh, ho, eh, lo, ho, no, ho, talosha, ya, ho, eh, ba, tu, ban, so, ba, ni, le, le, sa, be, foca, eh, me, di, da, mo, ho, lo, zone, eh, di, le, sa, di, la, Jang, ho, eh, di, swara, le, ma, to, to, ah, no, eh, ne, ah, bo, eh, fe, la.
So the bill is about upstream.
Kajalo, mo, la, chomo, war, na, oh, no, uber, ka, na, fa, no, fa, le, ho, eh, Piwa, ha, eh, di, mineral.
Now, when you do upstream, you can either do it offshore or onshore.
Yeah, no, ha, re, eh, Pula, di, mineral, Zeno, na, le, zone, eh, di, ka, du, eh, mo, ten, ha, na, ha, ya, ro, na, ho, sa, di, ka, du, eh, ho, lo, ho, ku, an, la, ha, na, ha, ya, ro.
Onshore is when you do it inland, not in the ocean.
Mo, eh, ten, ha, na, ha, ya, ro, na, ke, fa, eh, ready, Di, Ra, ya, ka, ha, di, bon, wa, mo, ten, ha, yo.
Offshore is when you do it deep in the ocean.
Me, offshore, talosha, eh, ten, ke, ha, uh, di, a, pa, di, to, eh, what, eh, ten, eh.
Now, I'm hoping, I'm coming with you correctly. I want to explain that off, offshore may not apply to you because you don't have an ocean.
Yeah, no, ki, ba, ta, ho, talosha, fa, no, ho, eh, offshore, eh, can, eh, ya, ske, ya, re, ama, kal, ba, a la, kal, ba, a la, ho, eh, harn, a, le, wa, ke.
But this bill is not for Mafiki or Mahiki, it's for South Africa.
Me, mo, la, chomo, oh, no, oh, ha, 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 wa, ku, a, le, wa, ba, tu, ba, Mafiki, oh, ku, a, le, Zui, Africa, Bora.
So you are not barred to speak about the offshore aspect of it.
Kajalo, ha, lo, ta, me, he, ho, eh, lo, Bu, eh, ka, car, lo, ya, eh, eh, am, a, la, lo, ho, choco, eh, sa, ho, po, lo, eh, ha, di, mineral, eh, Zeno, mo, ten, eh, ten, ha, le, wa, ke.
Now, let's get to... They are not barred from speaking about it, ha, ba, le, ha, ba, Hanel.
Oh, ha, 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 wa, Hanel, eh, ho, eh, lo, ha, ha, ho, eh, ho, eh, lo, eh, lo, kas, ka, lo, eh, lo, eh, Bu, a, ka, ka, ya, di, mineral, eh, Zeno, eh, eh, di, to, eh, mo, car, lo, ya, offshore, mo, ten, ha, lo, eh, lo, ka, Bu, a, ka, to, eh.
You see how it's important to have a, someone speaking next to you. So the bill first and foremost seeks to separate, eh, petroleum and minerals.
Kajalo, we, ke, la, lo, ba, mo, la, chomo, oh, no, war, na, ke, ho, ka, ha, ya, di, petroleum, eh, lady, mineral.
So that they each and every of the two have its own independent legislation.
Ho, eh, eh, lo, eh, 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 zone, eh, eh, ne, le, mo, la, oh, la, oh, like, eh, oh, eh.
Why is that important?
Ho, ring, so, se, le, bo, choco.
Because when you speak about, in the MPRDA, when you speak about both, sometimes you get confused and investors get confused. But if you speak about petroleum and you separate it from minerals, it's better understood what you're talking about.
Ka, ho, ne, can, a, ko, eh, har, eh, Bu, a, ka, MPRDA, eh, 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 zone, na, can, a, ko, eh, ha, eh, talosha, ya, Se, eh, me, har, eh, di, ka, ha, ya, eh, Bu, a, eh, eh, lo, eh, eh, zone, eh, ke, me, sa, can, oh, si, eh, eh, ho, eh, di, talosha, ya, Se, eh, 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 u, to, la.
Now, what does it seek to achieve?
Yeah, no, we, ke, la, lo, Zua, Se, eh, eh.
It seeks to achieve equitable access to and sustainable development of our petroleum resources.
Mo, la, chomo, oh, no, eh, we, ke, la, lo, Zua, eh, oh, na, ke, ho, fi, ke, la, eh, to, ka, fa, to, eh, ya, Di, mineral, eh, Zeno, eh, eh, la, eh, le, ka, le, ka, na, Se, eh.
Now, remember I said we're talking about upstream?
Yeah, no, eh, like, choco, eh, ho, eh, ki, le, ka, eh, Bu, a, ka, upstream.
In most cases, people who go offshore and look for natural gas or crude oil is big companies.
Hansi, ba, tu, ha, ba, ya, offshore, come on, sa, ma, eh, eh, ba, ya, ho, ba, ta, di, mineral, eh, di, mineral, eh, Zeno, eh, eh, we, ke, la, eh, eh, di, Tamo, eh, di, ho, lo, to, eh, 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 ho, eh, di, ba, ta, na, li, oh.
When I talk about big companies, I'm talking your Shell, Total, BP and so forth. I'm not talking about me and Volmarans.
Ha, ki, Bu, a, ka, di, Tamo, eh, di, ho, lo, ha, ki, Bu, a, ka, na, le, eh, Volmarans, ki, Bu, a, ka, di, Tamo, eh, di, swan, a, le, bo, BP, bo, Totally, bo, Shelly, di, Tamo, eh, di, in, Zing, jalo.
Now, this bill seeks to make sure that those big companies and their activities will benefit as well.
Kajalo, mo, la, chomo, oh, no, eh, we, ke, la, lo, Zua, eh, oh, na, ke, ho, di, Ra, ho, eh, di, Tamo, eh, di, in, Zing, jalo, eh, 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 zone, eh, 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 eh.
That is why this bill wants to ensure that this active participation of black people as well as the state itself, which is government.
So, the Parliament of the Republic of South Africa comprises of two houses.
One is the National Assembly, which we form part of. The second one is the National Council of Provinces. Why am I explaining this? Is because we are doing public hearings as the National Assembly. The same bill can be brought back by the National Council of Provinces. Because after we have passed it as the National Assembly, we take it to the National Council of Provinces.
And by law, before they take it to the president to sign it into law,
they must go back and speak to the people and consult. Now, because we are here for consultations, we will now kick start. But I need to explain a few rules that applies in parliamentary sitting like this. You are allowed to say anything and everything you want to say. In a language of your choice. But you must understand that we have scanned Maheking and surrounding areas and got the languages that are spoken around. So the translation will only on those languages that are local. If you know French or German, it's fine, save it, we want the local language. Now, these seats that are here will only be occupied by people that I'm going to point and say they are allowed to speak. When I say one, you occupy the first one? And say your name, your surname? And the organization you are representing. If you are representing yourself, that's fine. If you are representing another organization or church or something else or environmental organization, you are allowed to say you are coming from where. I, I want everybody to be very, very easy and comfortable. But maintain the decorum of the house. Now, we have arrived here, we are not from Maheking. We do have people from Maheking. And we have the Speaker of the Municipality, Ms. Mate. And the MMC of Public Safety, who is an acting mayor, also Ms. Mate. I, I want everybody to be very, very easy and comfortable. But maintain the decorum of the house. Now, we have arrived here, we are not from Maheking. We do have people from Maheking. And we have the Speaker of the Municipality, Ms. Mate. And the MMC of Public Safety, who is an acting mayor, also Ms. Mate. Yeah, she just stepped out, she's coming back. We will first allow the Speaker to welcome us. We want to feel welcome because so far, we just felt at home because we are South Africans and we are members of parliament. Now, Speaker and everyone else, everybody who speaks must be in tho- in that, inside that small box. Why is this important? Is because this sitting is live, either in 4O8 or it will be live later in 4O8 or in another channel. So need that.
Thank you very much. This is a very weird situation, finding myself addressing when there are people behind me. As a speaker, I'm forever facing people. It feels so very weird, but thank you very much and I'm very honored. Thank you very much. Kalina, bahayetu, good morning. Dumelambahayetu, toloki hakizwa hui peraka janka ronar koi tsohobuas tsoanaso hona hosiisakoskoi. Otan nonzo shifta, shifta, garishif. And tate waka, it's not that I do not English, but I come from a Sichuan speaking area in the. You can borrow me this one for the meantime. Thank you very. Thank you very much. Like I was saying, I, I preside over a city or an area that is predominantly Sichuan speaking. And therefore, I cannot find myself in a situation speaking and the very communities that I stand up for get lost in translation. So me and you are gonna have to swap between the languages. Kalina, kenna councila, hahomate.
My name is Councila Hahomate.
And I'm the Council Speaker, Yamaheken Local Municipality.
Thank you. Let me start by bringing forth the apologies of our Council Mayor, Petro.
He is addressing a graduation ceremony of PhDs. As a candidate himself, it is extremely important that he, he hones in and understands that feeling already, thank you. Let me start by welcoming the Portfolio Committee. We are very honored to be hosting you, Momaheken.
Thank you.
Iki, amochele, di MMCs lema kancelara arona otli asevan mo kancelenyama Hiken, gabopara.
Let me also welcome the MMCs and the councilors who are sitting here in Maheken at large.
I'm.
I'm very proud to be a Speaker and looking around, I do see some members of those who are sitting with me in council. I'm very proud for that and I'm really thankful for it.
I'mochele, kapeli, di Ward Committee members taronake baboni, most wards are represented.
And also to say a welcome to most of our Ward Committee members. I have seen and quite a number of them are here present.
Yaga, kancelaya Mahiken, ritselachile tata, kadi Ward Committees because they are the ones who are making merako wabo kancelara horu onne o, o, onne, a little bit easier.
So as a Maheken Council, we are very proud and we rely heavily upon the Ward Committees because their contribution is really to make our work easier.
Thank you very much. Kefele tsekahu, amochela, eh, di officials eh, in the different departments eh, le gamotenghamasbala. Kelebo chele Portfolio Committee, Yamaheken Local Municipality, ILD, that stopped its portfolio meeting to come and join us here. Kekupachole lebo, tata, LED Portfolio Yamaheken Local Municipality. Thank you MMC, lazo.
And then I want to say thank you very much also for the Portfolio Committees here in Maheken, eh, who are here present with us and from the LL.
LED.
LED. And we also want to say thank you very much for your presence.
Eh, kelebo cha, bahayetu, eh, sami inele horu lo amochela, rekabua kachola hobiwakodidi jadi bofili. Me, before ki, ki, ki ba microphone fatse. Bahayetu, kera, baba momorohak, barabaitele zempel. Ki tagerli kutwezhoritlizim.
Eh, I want to say thank you very much, people. I would like you to feel free. Eh, in Sichuan, we have an adage that says that dogs have been chained. In other words, feel free and be comfortable. And for you all who are behind me as those who we are actually your leadership, I would like to say.
Bahayetu, eh, this bill.
We hope you have understood very well eh, this bill that has got to do with eh, mineral petroleum and of course related to gas.
Le state sa government, mohyon.
Mohole karolo, ewo, uzo inaleone, mohyon.
Le botloku abahore bili eh. Re le mochehore, di economic opportunities taron, di mokai.
And also to come to realize that with regard to this bill, we come to realize where are our economic opportunities.
Yaga batu babanzu, rotlule eh, eking chepese na atlalosa. Eketenza reya khakala, khakala, khakal, lihu ungelwa. Keza petroleum, moli di mineral resources. Harisiri kiman, gurutshunze beraliti.
So as the Acting Chair said, as black people, it looks like we have been drifting far and far and further away eh, set of actually benefiting as far as this bill is consented.
Eh, di katoza, di petrolo, di hasi, jalo, jalo, di mineralis, sanzen dile momatsohu. Ababangwe, khadi se difikisenke, mohron.
And we come to realize that eh, some of these minerals that we're talking about are in the hands of some, they haven't actually come to be in our hands yet.
Re hupola khape, hore, renalema fatse, abaholo barona, baritluchelitzingon, ri rankaon.
And we also have to remember that we have lands, which our forefathers actually have left for us. Now, the question is, what are we doing with those?
Retsana modi land claim in rebatali fatse beke, but ri rankalo na harifetaholika.
We go for land claims, we need these lands. What are we gonna do with it once it has been actually given back to us?
Moriduzin tenchunze reyanon, ri redzin, ribulandi zebi. Horretla rokonohu ikutwela hore, how do we prospect, le fatse?
Now, where we're sitting, would ask you to pay a very close attention so that. And how can you know as to how much benefit you will then derive from the land which you may have been able to claim?
Yanon, di kato tesa di petroleum, muzeli di hasit. Di kanaboto kwa, hadika unwell, ronareli di citizens, reneli estate in it.
Now, it would be best if these petroleum resources can benefit us so that we also can have a share.
Kajalu, retleratlalu kanyele botloku abahore, ri dumaleneli estate und entiti. Eklabe retsa me ise taza, di petrolo, li di minerali. Le license nyating hasipare diwabahayetu. Kororhotla nabutshofu nyanab because babanzi baronamo, we've already long applied for the license etama dikireger. Ri dikireli marharitirirenka tso.
And also for us to understand these resources and especially when it comes to the matter of being able to be a licensee so that when we have this, then we know exactly what is the next step to take. What are we going to do with them?
Kajalu, parlamenteki, yagore tzarona.
So here is the parliament coming to listen to us. They don't want gossips, they don't want all of that.
Baba tla hutwa korarri. Renalema fatse, renalidi toro, we are young people, we understand local economic beneficiaries. What is our expectation to them? Korabakonohurutusa, korrekonoho access, these very things.
All what they want us is to be able to understand them and of course, for us to know the beneficiaries or how are we going to be able to benefit from this exercise which they are here for as we'll be participating in it.
Kama fokuawo, kelebocha, lotlele amochetu Portfolio Committee eh, eh, MP Volmarans weena warona otla kamonothweste yaronar itume zehotota. Hobona utlilahi, umewurukonohurukiseta, esitinyezhananlie. Retla kola weena ra kola komidi, utlimaramira kolo weena because weena uwa mohai.
So we want to thank very much the Portfolio Committee for its presence here and especially Mr. Volmarans. You actually have come back home, you belong here, you are our homeboy. And we thank you very much for having been able to bring us a sitting like this so that eh, we can actually have some interaction through it.
Kelebocha, bahayetu, le amochetu, lotli, let us have a fruitful session.
Thank you, everyone, eh, you are most welcome.
Thank you very much, Speaker. I want to say something. You, 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 you must let me finish. Get a pen and paper before I give hands to people. People, I introduced you to Honorable Phillips. What I did not do is to tell you where she comes from. She comes from the Democratic Alliance. Honorable Malinga from the ANC. Honorable Volmarans from the ANC. Eh, Honorable Makkeke Jobeja from the ANC. Honorable Javta from the AIC. Honorable Motsebe from the EFF. Honorable Bilankulu from the ANC. Now, there are two reasons why I am doing it now. The first is that the Speaker wants me to fight with my committee. The Speaker was supposed to welcome us. We were going to give her to participate on the bill afterwards. The reason why we do that is that people are easily intimidated when their leadership starts. They tend to follow what the leadership has said. And if you are an ANC councillor, the EFF and the AIC starts looking at me to say, what is this now? You, you are, you are actually leading people to follow a, a, a certain path. So don't make me fight with my eh, eh Portfolio Committee members. The second issue why I explained this is that I also want you to understand when I refuse to have my views on the bill. When you ask me questions and I tell you I don't want to answer those questions. It is for the reason that we don't agree on the bill here. Because it's, it's, it's not yet our bill. We have been given by the department, it has been facilitated by the department for us to process it. So if you ask me a question and I have a view, they will start standing up and say, but where do you get that view? So I want you to understand that we are going to get our own time in parliament where we always fight, where you are not eh, around, and battle it out there, not here. So I just want you also to under- I avoid to fight with my members. So help me avoid fighting with my members. Can I take hands? Want to speak? Number one, two, three, four, five. I have already recognized you. Five, six, seven. How many seats do you have? Okay, we're at seven. I want ten. Yeah, we are not stopping councilors from speaking as well. I just eh, no, no, not the Speaker, not the man. Those people speak after because they are leadership eh, at some level. We need three. We need three, I'm counting. Or you want to first listen eh, to others before you speak? We allow that. Eh, okay, we have seven. Eh, number one, your name, your surname, your capacity. Other issues that we can respond to, thank you.
Morning. Morning. Morning, morning. Eh, kenna tapeloka koma from Watetin, Naka. Eh, on the Maheken Local Municipality. Eh, I'm from the, I'm the CEO of the company called Spin City, Spin City Northwest. We dealing with automobile, motorsport, eh, bikes, whether aqua, jet skis, quad bikes, superbikes, all of those things, they use oil. Oil, the mineral, it's very buankatson. Eh. Klarata, chuneyeh, kholelibaha, lotle. Bawa mobilhaka, baba tona, it's eh, it's not every time a person get this type of opportunity. Eh, I'm honored. According to me, it should bring change eh, eh, effectively immediately, not later. Because eh, total RIN is, we're not working, unemployment is very high. And Momaheken, bana botle, they love cars, they love bikes. Eh, unfortunately, parents don't enjoy, don't, don't afford to buy them cars and bikes. Only a few privileged from our comrades who got money can do that. But unfortunately too. Bambaos nama, divadi 350, kema tata eh. And then eh, moving forward. This bill ya hori tsoela mosola tata. Because as we are speaking, we are expecting eh, a team of guys from Venezuela eh, outside of, outside eh, South Africa. We've been in talks with these guys for the past six years. And best believe, eh, these guys are very, very keen to help us. And they want to come to South Africa, especially Maheken. I've been speaking to all of our senior office bearers. They don't hear me, they, they don't understand, or they, they understand, they don't want to help. It's not in their pipeline. But today, fortunately, there's a sitting like this. I'm here and I was invited by the council themselves, eh, which I'm very grateful. Now, this bill. International relationship, eh, 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 relationship, yaronale eh, our visitors in, in September, they're coming in September, they were supposed to be here in June. Eh, as we are speaking now, we are doing the activation. Picking all these doors, I don't know for how many decades, but eh, you'll be surprised. And eh, we got this opportunity to extract minerals in, in the northwest. It's a goo- eh, good opportunity. Only if, is it look a benefiter, if you, a bill can pass and then eh, we hold analysis or hati eh, connection afterwards. Service delivery yaronah nationwide. Now, it's even worse, matzatzinga, ma kancelara batla obregis tali proof of rest. We see these things on TV, we see these things on WhatsApps. We can't turn a blind eye on this type of things. We must say eh, 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 we, we must actually encourage your community to be part of eh, 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 growing o, 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 opportunity eh, 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 northwest, Yamaheken. But no, eh, 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 this sitting, ikabi benefitele, eh, eh, infectaki bone, bana bava nsimu. Baba very relevant to this eh, city. Now, neke ko pava tadi. This is my plea. Horasosese sa fela, fela, fa channel for eh, tele breakfast and lunch probably. Thank you for the breakfast. Kawi tumela tata, mui saho, hankabona bili eh. Era tumela tata, ivileba konako bereka le rona, our, our, our officials, ba encourage. Baba setimba le, mo, mo, eh, eh, it's eh, asimongole mongwe, o vatlan, o, 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 in this type of industry. Rona, rona, we are deep in this industry, very deep. We supposed to be having our own. We're supposed to be having our own major, state-of-the-art garage, a light aircraft. Even though we don't know how to fly, we do help those people buy the ship. So, we got so many different types of them. Right here, I think, I don't know if it's Wat, Coco, Molapong. What is it? Wat, Watman? Komalapong? What is this? Wat, Koto Tonyani? Yeah, Watetin. No, 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 I'm from Watetin, it's not Watetin. Yeah, I think it's twelve. Buy your diesel. And I see from here to Moroquing, I think there's a lot of things we need to be involved. And I thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kakoma. Can you please tell us whether you are in support or you are rejecting the bill?
I'm in support.
Thank you. Good people, before I call the second speaker, it's important that you do indicate your support or your rejection to the bill. And I could not stop Mr. Kakoma because I had not told the sitting that there is time allocation. So I'm going to give you three minutes, but I won't stop you at three minutes, I will stop you at five. But your time allocation is three minutes. Thank you very much. Let's wait for the translation. Thirteen.
Oh, thirteen, sorry. I mean eighteen, thirteen. Wat thirteen, pardon me. Okay, he was speaking in Zona here, where he made mention that the bill, we hope, it is our hope that this bill will be of a very great benefit to us. And I'm expecting and have been dealing and interacting with a team that is coming from offshore, that is from Venezuela into our country. And I've been having some interactions and some discussions with them for as long as six years now. These are the people who are very keen to help us. So they want to come here, right in Mafiki. And we also have been talking to some of our office bearers. But unfortunately, some of the people whom we engage in these discussions do not have a good understanding of these things. And so I have been invited by our council here, and I'm very, very grateful so that I could be here and put a word or two on some of the thoughts that I have about this bill. And then, this also makes me have a hope that our international relations, which will happen in September, will be of a very great benefit for us. It was supposed to happen in June, but it's going to be happening actually in September this year. But the problem is that we are not funded. And because right now, one other thing that we notice is that not all people who are engineers can be able to be mechanics and things like that. And we've got a lot of, some of the young people who are actually engineers when it comes to some of these minerals, but most of them have given up. Because, and they are jobless, some of them. And we would like to really not do that, but to take this opportunity with both hands so that we can have an ability to extract the minerals that we have here in our land. And also, one of the other things that we are keeping in mind is that we want to be part of the growing, of the growth that is taking place right here in Mafiki. There are many people who haven't received the message to be present in this particular sitting. And it is my plea now that this must not just end up here. And maybe it mustn't end up without some breakfast and lunch because some of us haven't had anything to eat. But we hope that it will be better than that. So we would be very, very happy if this bill can really be of a very great benefit to all of us. And not all people are in this industry. But I'm one of those people who are very deep in this industry. And then which, of course, we want to make sure that we support it very much and then we become those of the state-of-the-art. Such things as being able to assemble, you know, an aircraft and etc. These oils that we are speaking about in our land here, there are very many. For example, if you think of our village in Tontonyani, there is that stream that is sprawling out there. And there is diesel underneath there. In fact, this is stretching all the way to Moroquing. So there is a lot that you can have there. And then so it connects oil, actually. So we really want our officials to take note of this and to help us with these thoughts. Thank you.
Let me take this time. Linalakaki Ameli Amoroy, Kiswako Otu, Radlo, Kilitlimo Fela, S. Kilekana, manager, Energy Center. So, I'm in the right track. What was the aim? Yeah, Pusokadi Integrated Energy Center, IECs. Like, there's this other one, so what was the aim of that? Because it used to be up and running about twenty, thirteen, and fourteen in our area. Because rural villages, it was a cooperative. Rona, it's like vandalized, and then it was a cooperative. So, what was the aim? So by that time, it was... Thank you. Okay, I support the bill.
Thank you.
Greetings to all members of parliament. Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Amelin Moroy, from Watu. Chairperson, I'm just here to seek clarity, just for the purpose of me understanding why are you here today? But basically, allow me to mention that I was once a manager of the energy centers previously. But I'm very much concerned to what happened to those energy centers that they used to exist in previous time. I see that most of them are vandalized. And it seems like nobody is putting any effort to make sure that they are up and running again. I'm not sure if I'm in the right platform to ask this question, but if you can just clarify that question, please. I just want to know what exactly happened to those energy centers. I will thank you very much if you can just bring an understanding to this question of mine. And I'm going to be as short as possible, that will be my submission. Lastly, I would like to indicate that I do support the bill, and thank you very much. Chairperson, thank you very much. My name is... What's his name again? Hense, from Wat Eight. My name is Hense from Wat Eight, under the councillor... Councillor Morobani. I'm here to support the bill. I'm very sure that wherever the councillor is, he's also in full support of the bill, and he will appreciate your presence here today. Councillor, I hope wherever you, parliament, wherever you are finding yourself comfortable in those hotels that you probably sleeping at, you make sure that what you're going to consume today is not just an ordinary KFC that you are all used to. Well, yeah, I'm very keen, I'm very curious to see what have you prepared for us today. As the previous speaker also mentioned that he was very hungry. I'm also here standing, but I can't really wait, actually, to have a nice food that you prepare for us. And I hope again that it's not an ordinary food of the SMME. I hope that the food that you prepared is actually of that standard SMME. And I don't really discredit KFC, but you are not open to eat KFC today. So I'm excited, and I support the bill again, thank you very much.
Chairperson, my name is Councillor Agion Konari, from Wat Ten, under Mahiki Municipality. Chairperson, I'm just going to raise a few concerns about this bill, though I'm in support of it. It is talking much of compliance, not of environmental impact. The document here is not, like, even when the people would be in support, but they must be conscientized of the environmental impact that the bill, when maybe say the people or the savvies have found oil, whatever petroleum, gas that they will find there, the people must be conscientized of the environmental impact. For example, I sometimes check YouTube, this thing of fragmenting. It affects the boreholes, this thing. And then you'll be drilling, but at the same time, you'll be affecting the water, the water base. So people must be conscientized of that. So that when such impacts happen, they mustn't again turn against government and say, "You were giving us this idea that this is good, now look at us, we are sick," and whatever. So I'm in support of the bill, thank you.
Let's wait for the translation.
Good afternoon, or good morning, good day. My name is Tshulufelo Tawana, I'm from Wat Eight. I'm Wat committee member also. My concern is only one or two. I'm just worried about the percentages, especially in clause thirty-one and thirty-four. Wat inform the ten percent interest of the black people and the twenty percent of the state-owned rights. And also, I'll support the bill, provided that there are no two ministers because it's petroleum and minerals. There are a lot of ministers nowadays. Can you just cut that? Because it's a worrisome issue again to have another, going to see another two ministers. Thank you.
Mr. Tawana? You will be of great assistance if you were to tell us that in your disagreement with the ten percent ownership of black people and twenty percent of state ownership, what is your view?
My view is that the ten percent, I see it's fifty plus, or it is the fifty percent BE status issues. But the twenty percent is beyond, I think it will cripple the, if it is an SMME issues based off inflation or recession issues. Do you affect that? And mostly, especially when you go to the five percent capital. If we are in SMEs, when trying to do the feasibility study in terms of that, you find the issues of, you're going to loan maybe like over my ten million, and you have to have the five percent capital of that. It's very, very difficult in terms of that.
With your reservations, are you in support, are you rejecting?
No, I said I support.
Okay, thank you.
Nalinalaka, Kireta Wana, Kijwaku Wat Ya Bu Eight. Kinali, I'm a Tshulufelo Fela, I can name Kibata, Kua Tchalo Sa. So, I'm in support of the bill. I'm a symbol of, has a clause, number thirty-one, Kifikaka, clause number thirty-four. Kiposa, Kore.
Okay, I would like to thank parliament for opening up this discussion and giving us the opportunity to air our views pertaining the new bill that they are yet to set out and implement. My name is Tzulufelotawana, I'm from Ward Ten. I'm in full support of the bill, even if it means us having two ministers by the way. Primarily because of, the petroleum industry is a very big industry and it has a lot of negative externalities that could pose a threat on the environment and it does need to have a separate entity of regulation of some sort so that we can get to protect the environment. And we cannot just say merely because of it has such huge external effects on the environment and thus would contribute negatively towards the global warming crisis that we are poised with, then we must scrap it off and say we are not going to deal with petroleum here in South Africa because of we are a developing country and we do need resources and the petroleum industry is an industry that has a lot of money and we could really benefit a lot from having this industry up and running. And separating the minerals industry from the petroleum industry would serve us good in the sense that it would allow policy formulators to restructure their policies well and come up with ideas and methods of how to go about developing SMEs in that particular industry, so to speak. So I'm in full support of it and the thumbs up for me.
Oe men faki nolendwe to kothlakku ratu, ku ward twelve. Na kilen nolendwe to le, lo kothlaka ku ward twelve o, mola ora o support. But, kona le, kenadi putu zidungu mu. S community, ritlo ku iti jang kore, blager vila mu koyon, enalo oe. Ba kenakor ba twaba ngoba tla mu, ba beta barin, sahara gama fatse arona, kantebasababonohoreng, kona le something, kutas khalifas. Kanyi nguki, kanyi kore. Few years back, kuthle kana le, kawistin Cape, kuyle kana, kuyle kana le, case ngue eile ngatjala, kore, company a shell, ba batla kua ku, tikinyala fasika kwa kore, ba batle oily, kenikibata kore, that issue ifenlisa kai, ba kenakorin. The last time I checked, South Africa ki tiger khaena drilling sa oily, kore, rokona ku kriya oily le roona. Then, kuthle kana le drilling ewo ku Cape Town, kore, ana, yonai drilling ewu, yonai fele seka, o, liban ba fele riti ba kriyo oil ba, o essencean ebo ruana, yonai oily ewu. Then, mori ba kenle nguki la kore, ten percent eh, ewo tengia the blacks ife loko ki utlu sente. I'd like to roll a governing body, eh, eh, controlan, or maybe italfiwa mahusi or some certain stakeholders, eh, kota kota ku ona ne ten percent ewu. Le mu kudimukha mu, koyakan na kete ten percent eh, inya, na ba kenakorin. Refelese, eh, na kora roona, S the community, oh, S the ownership ito, nama fatse aw. Refelese, regreya, ditiri alo, te diña, ne te longoreng, kanyi kara benefita, tata mo koto, eh, kiala bocha.
My name is Loetor Ratu and then I'm from Ward number twelve and I support the bill. But I do have one or two questions that I would like to pose. How would we know if the land at which we are has oil underneath? Because it does happen, has happened before where some people just came from somewhere and removed us from our area where we lived because obviously they knew that there was something. So how would we know that there is some mineral under, under the ground, maybe in the land in which we reside? In Eastern Cape, it happened some time ago that there was a case that was being conducted related to shell company, shell company actually wanted to explore some oil. Where did that case actually end up? We haven't heard anything about it up to this point in time. I thought that South Africa actually has some drilling processes. For an example, in Cape Town, there was one other case mentioned where there was explor- explor- exploration of oil. Also, the question remains as to, did they get the oil? Did they find it when they were doing that? Now, the ten percent which has been mentioned in the bill itself, if I understood, it said that this will be for the blacks, it's very, very small for us. Now, the question that I want to ask is that, is this going to have some governing body formulated for it, who will actually keep an eye and have a control over it? Or will there some stakeholders who will actually shoulder that responsibility? So this ten percent is indeed very small and as ownerships of these, we would like to know so that we can be able to be sure of what we have. Thank you very much.
Chairperson, greetings. Allow me to introduce myself, my name is Jean Ralph Lechote from Ward Fifteen. I'm a proud DA member and I would like to bring your attention that I fully support this bill, wholeheartedly, hundred percent. However, I have a question with a follow-up of a request, so to say. Chairperson, we need to be informed and well-informed and more educated in terms of the content of this bill. I will, for me, I'm fortunate because I'm more inclined with what bill contains, but I'm just, about the other people, the same location that I'm from, in Colini, in Colini Tabolo Khang. Excuse me there with the technicalities of the microphone. Chairperson, if you can just allow me two minutes to recap on this interpretation, please. As already mentioned, my name is Jean Ralph Lechote from Ward Fifteen, a proud member of DA and like I already mentioned that I really support the bill, wholeheartedly. And I believe that other members within the DA also do support the bill. However, Chairperson, please allow me to pose a question that will be followed by a request as well. Chairperson, I have a worry in terms of this gathering, particularly on the understanding of the content of the bill itself. While for myself, if I were to speak for myself, I would say that I'm more inclined with what the bill discuss, but I'm a bit worried about other people, especially the youth from the township that I'm coming from, in Colini, Tabolo Khang, that they are not really well-informed about this. They don't get an opportunity to be informed about this gathering, to be more specific. But yes, my request is that, please do see to it that people are informed, conduct more workshops so that when people are coming for these gatherings, they are well-informed and they understand the meaning and the purpose and the reason for this discussion. I want to allow furthermore to say, please do take some opportunity to inform our youth in Colini, in Tabolo Khang. Again, I'm a DA member and I support the bill, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, good people, and I must say we are on the right track because we are speaking about the bill and nothing else but the bill. I will take another set of hands because I do know that now people are at ease to speak. But before I do that, let me try and help with a few issues raised. Memory Amelia, I don't know what the centers were for. But what I know is if you were to tell this committee that those centers must be resuscitated, at least it won't come from us, it will come from you and that's what we're here for. I think you lost an opportunity to take that as an opportunity to say what you want. You asked a question, I can't answer you. I can take what you say and converse the committee whether we must make that our recommendations or not. I'm not sure whether I'm responding to you properly. The second issue from councillor Obagion. The bill does talk about environment. It says that as per the constitutional prescript, the petroleum development must be done in a manner responsible that do not harm the environment. Now, if you expect me to tell people that, "Don't allow this fracking, don't allow this drilling because of this environment," I won't. It's not my space. I'm here to hear your views. If you were to come and say, "No, let's deal with the environment," it will be recorded and then we will take that view because we don't want our view to dominate the outcome of the report. Mister Ratu. Okay, it means I got it wrong. How will we know that we have oil in our land? If municipalities were to have geologists, good geologists, you would know that this kind of soil or land has a potential to have this kind of minerals and therefore they would make an application to the Council for Geoscience to come and do exploration or they get an external company that can do exploration. Because there is a geological map of South Africa and what the soil contains. Let me give you an example. The Witwatersrand gold mines have got a belt. It was just discovered that somewhere in Nganda, there is that- It was just discovered that somewhere in Nganda, there is that kind of gold. Now, what geologists will do is to track where it comes from. Because there's a belt, there's always a belt. But sitting there, you won't know. You need good geologists who are going to do that, and it needs exploration. So the only time you're going to know is through exploration and good geologists. And you would need to have the municipality or provincial government to help you with that. What happened in the Western Cape? If I hear you, you are asking about two things. I will assume because you spoke about shale. You are speaking about the shale gas discovery in the Karoo. We are told that we have probably the second or the third, we are the third, or we have the third endowment of gas in the Karoo. But fracking is not an option because it damages the environment. There was a court case, experts advices. The Council for Geoscience and the department are following those advices to make sure that there is development of gas without harming the environment. Because the environment is important, especially when it comes to climate change. So that issue is out of court, but there must be processes followed to make sure that if there is a development of gas, it is done responsibly. I know of another well that has been drilled in a place called Brupalda. It's some island. So it's the offshore discovery. It is there, but still environmental aspects need to be looked at. So want to develop, follow environmental aspects properly. We will end up having to reap fruits that we have underground and offshore. That's all I can say. I, they are dealing with environmental aspect. I do agree about the workshop that this bill has got around 60 pages or more. And expecting you to understand it here is not sufficient. And to workshop you for an hour also may not be sufficient. So I do agree that there must be more workshops on these issues and other issues that may become laws in the future. I hope I've done justice to the comments. What I can do, I have my own views on the comments. Can I take other hands? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I'm looking for a female now. Ten. Three minutes each.
Dumeleng. Nakalina ke Josekwa seholi. Ki tlaha ko Wad 25 mahikeng local municipality. Eke fa kele mokanselara wa EFF mo mahikeng local municipality. Ibele kele northwest PCT member, chairperson in mining. Thank you. Chairperson, as the EFF, we do not support the bill. However, we support the amendment of the bill. MPRDA is opposed to introduce a new bill. We will take the opportunity through public hearings to make proposal on key policy, issues that affect the petroleum industry and further emphasize that this edition should be in the MPRDA. There is no need for additional legislation to separate petroleum from the Mineral and Petroleum Resources Development Act. We reject the upstreaming Petroleum Resources Development Bill. We need to remind the community members that petroleum, like minerals, remains a common heritage for all and in the custody of the state on behalf of all the people. However, there is relentless effort to reduce the role of the state to that of the administrator of mining rights while the private sector that benefited from colonialization and apartheid continues to steal our minerals and petroleum resources. It does not work to give rise to private companies to enjoy their so-called common heritage alone because they do not share their profit. Thank you, chairperson. As I was saying in the EFF, we do not support the bill. Thank you.
Messe xole.
Yes.
While you are still there, I can see you wrote something. If you can be so kind to submit to that beautiful lady there on the table so that it's easier for them to capture.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
You can go now there or later when you have made amendments. It depends.
Will do that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Kialaboha, mudula sidulo. Ina lame ke Josekwa seholi, chotwa ko Wad 25. And from Mafiki local municipality. And where I serve as a councillor of the EFF in the Mafiki local municipality. And also I'm a member of, and also a chairperson in the mining industry there. Well, jaka le lokola EFF, mudula sidulo. Rona hara tsheheze, mala khomo ono. Me fala se selele, thank you ho re, re tsheheza di mametelelo. Ze ditla ze wan mo ho one. Ka ma, ka ma zoma hara le ba MPRDA. To ta, serba ba tla ho sedira fano faha, hara ba tla ho re ho ze wamolao omuncha. Me re ba tla ho re ho ze we di mametelelo. Ze elo ho re ke zone seru tla zamane le zone. Ka ma zoma re tshehe, di lo di we ze di ncha moten ha mala khomo ono. Ze elo ho re di amana le petroliamo eno yarona. Ka ho choke he ibile, ka fale tlakuru lele mo ho re ho nele kauha niyo. Eh, faha raha petroliamo li di minerali. Rona jaka EFF raha na na le se ho chotlelele. Serba ba tla ho sedira, ba tla ho hakula le ma lowa asucha ba ho re sentenze petroleum. Ke bo swajuarona, ya ka ha insa jana. Ibele ka pe re loansana, le kha niyo ho re ho fuku di we di chwanelo za ho di ra. Eh, mome po, eli tiro ya ho eh, epolola di minerali ze nuze na le zone. Ka re ba tla ho re, ho diro ga mo hwa, o insa jalo. Me re ba tla ho re ba tu bo tlay ba ipelele, le chotlo leno, le re na lelo ne la di minerali ze nuze. Kabo tala, ebele ka pe, re akantela ka kha niyo ho re. Bo soya apartheidi ya na kwa e fitili. Ilaya na ya chora ha na tata le ho chwa di minerali zeu na le zone. Khumpia nu jana re ba tla ho re, inne zara ra re ho ne, ipelela zone. Eh, inne bo swajaro na, jaka ha ke tala si ze, me ri pelele zone ka bo tala ra leboha.
Thank you. I think what the chairperson is saying is not only the previous lady that is allowed to submit on the table. Everyone who has something written must feel free to do so. Thank you.
Okay, greetings and salutations, everyone in the house. My name is Tavant Timule from Wad 7, Mahikeng. Under the leadership of Comrade Lechonolo Mchali, who is our councillor. Firstly, I would like to acknowledge the parliamentary visit to us as the community at large to have a say or input with regards to the bill. Ma, I've got, I've got a few questions here. Unfortunately, some of them won't be able to be answered to immediately. However, I will just ask one or two of them. Now, the first one is about the separation of the petroleum and the minerals. My question is related to the job creation or job losses. How is the separation of the two, what impact is it gonna have? Is it gonna create more jobs since, well, they are going to be independent? Are we gonna see job creation or job losses? Hopefully, we see job creations because we, particularly young people, are living in tough times. And the second one is that should the bill be amended? Because I believe that when you were, when you were, you were, you were sitting around discussing the bill, discussing the implementation or the, you're strategizing on the bill. I believe you had, you had your targets, your pros and cons with regards to the bill. Now, my question is that what are you aiming to achieve? Given that the bill is amended in, say, 10 years' time? What are you aiming to achieve? Your economic, your youth empowerment? What are you aiming to achieve with regards to those? And lastly, I want to know that should the bill be successfully implemented or amended? Are you gonna come back to us and say, okay, good people, the bill was successfully amended? Now, this is what we are going to do or what we are aiming to achieve. And we will come back to you with the answers at a later stage. Thank you. I hereby fully support the bill. Thank you.
Kialaboha, fe la tata mudula sidulo. Na lina lame ke Tavant Timule, ke so wu Wad number 7. Ho ne mo Mafiki, ka fatas ka bo iteli di pele ba ha, Comrade Lechonolo Mchali. Me ibile, re dume la tata ho bo parlamente itle fano ere teze, mo le poleno larona. Elo ho re, re tla ho re ho ne ba di chuno za ho re, lo na re tshehe, di chwelo. Mo mala khomo ono orbu ya ka wene khumpia. Ke na li di pozo di le ma loa nyana, fe la seke ne ke ka rata ho di boza. Messe ke se, isen choko ke ho re, ya ito ho re, di ka na sa, sketsa, arabiwa ka bo na kwa na ko jaka ho na nu jana. Ho ka dirahha ho re di arabiwe na ko ngomra. Amela fa ho ze jalo ke ba tla ho di boza di pozo seu. Oto ya ncha, yone ki ya ho re. Kha niyo ya ho kauha niyo petroliamo li di minerali. Ah, to ta itlo ho re solahala mulimo. Ah, itlo ho re kisa za, ho tamiwa ka di tiro. Ho za, ah, itlo ho re di ra ho re, ba toba la kha leki di tiro. Itlo ho re di ra jang, di tama ra ho za, yoni, itlo ho re na ze rinse jang. Me ibile ka pe, ke solha fa tla ho re, itla kisa, eh, tamo ya di tiro, mo boe mo jao ho re ba toba la kha leki di tiro. Ka ho ne, ba toba le banzi, ba sela la mo ma tating, abo ho ka tiro. Oto ya bo be edin, fa ho ka di ra ha ho re mala khomo ono o, o mametelelo. Eh, oto eke na liyone fano faja ka hara insa re chotla. Ke ho re sentenze ma ikaelelo le mo kela wa lo na ki in. To ta, lo ba tla ho fi kela la in, eh, ka, eh, mala khomo o, aru remo di wa hen di le ten, ze di tan. Ke isen lo ba tla ho se fi kela la. Me ibile ka pe, ke poza le ho re, aseno si tiro ho solahala ekonomi yarona mulimo. Aseno se si tiro ho di ra ho re ba shale bone, ba chomelelo, eh, elo ho re ba tla ba ho ne, ho solahala mulimo. Messe bo fe lo, fa ho di ra ha ho re mala khomo ono o, o mametelelo, ka ka tlay ho. Ah, lo tiro boela moporo na, lo tla ho re bolela ho re, re atlehi le, re, le di mametelelo mopala khomo ono o, jano ho tla fa no. Ma ikaela aru na itlo ho na, senanne le senanne. Kialaboha.
Thank you for the interpretation. I must make it clear, as our acting chairperson has done so. In his opening, it was very clear that we are here to hear your views. It is the bill that is being proposed by the department, not by this portfolio committee. I think he went further to explain the difference of the three arms of the state. So we haven't yet got an opportunity as this committee to deliberate on the bill. Our time will come after we went all these nine provinces and got the views of their people. So I just want the speakers to follow, not to ask us questions, but to give their views on the bill as explained. Thank you very much.
Ba ja, so ya ka ha mudula sidulo, aile a tala sa fa na asimolola. Wele a tala sa ho re, eh, mo mala khomo ono oru to tla ka wene ho ne jano jana. Re ka rata ho re, lo nse di chwelo za lo na, me lo seka wa boza di pocho ka ho na, hara ho ne ho arabe di pozo za lo na ho ne jano jana. Akeraha na asimola, bila a tala sa ka, di karlo ze tata, elo ho re di ahama pata abuso. Mala khomo ono o, jaka ha onse jana, harisi ro na, jaka komiti re ho di ra chwezo ka wene, kaza loha ra na di karabo. Ha isi inne mala khomo waro na, ibile ha semola waro na. Kaza lo re leza ho re, lo na nchan di chwelo, me halos na ho sa di chwelo za lo na. Ro na ra re za rza ka zebe, mo itla ra ngoma ra ho nyana, ha ho ya, Joseka seka di chwelo zo che za lo na. Ebe na ho ne, eh, ho ka na ka di ra ha ho re, re tla ka di karabo ze, elo ho re, lu libeleze ho re, ro lo ne zone za di pozo za lo na.
Dumeleng ba ho lo. Ke na le rato koza, ke tlaha ke lokora monsero milwa, Wad 16. Na seki si, ele za ho si ka si a tla tla ba ho lo. Ke ho re, ya ewutwa kha niyo 10%. Elo ho re, it's been issued to the black people. I'd like to say to the committee ho re, oka re, oka re le ka boela ka pe mo ho ye one, lai loe ya tla tla ka pe, the 10%. I think it's fair enough for ro na ro, ro na ro, as black people ho re, oka re le ka re fa, an opportunity. Not only for the youth, but for women. women kha ka women empowerment, especially when it comes to the zin zin yana ta bu mining. Hanzi warabaitela ku pe women da been put aside or da been put on a certain position. So, ne kiko pa kare kare nela fasira ya kanya sintle li this niya petroliamo it's a very good thing that has come up for ro na, the South Africans, and kha kota momizi niya ro na it's going to be much even more difficult for ro na because like neribu kharana di di, I can't, di babatlo kinspeka the area haro hizi kore foreign na kuti ma fasar kere na lo na, ada swaler kere na lo ne what do we have? Or kinsero na resuritwa rezinksoni, moma tukho nga ro kialiboha. I'm very much in support of the bill.
Jakopalinasera sisi.
Lerato Kosa.
Thank you very much, Chair. My name is Lerato Kosa. And then there is one point that I would like to point out, maybe as a point of emphasis, that the matter of ten percent that has been allocated for blacks is a worrisome. And we are basically thinking of the fact that we would like to ask you to go back, have a look at it, and actually discuss it again, so that we also can be able to have some opportunities. Now, those opportunities do not have to only be for young people, but they also have to be for women, because we really need women empowerment. One thing that I've taken note of is that men are always being given first preference when women are being relegated into the background. So, we would like you to please look into this matter, so that you can help us. The fact is that the matter of petroleum, this subject about petroleum is very, very good, and we need it. But now, it is going to be very, very difficult in our families, because we need to also see how actually we can benefit from it. The problem right now, even as you just mentioned and I looked at earlier by one of the speakers, we need to know exactly, or it seems as if, as you said, Chair, we don't have geologists who can actually come, do some exploration, and to confirm to us whether we do have minerals in the places where we live. So, this type of thing needs to be looked into, so that we can all benefit, just like any other people. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Chair. My name is Rasel Maluleke from Ward Twenty-Eight, Mahiking Local Municipality. Chair, I'm in support of the bill. But I also want to say that these two entities, the mineral and the petroleum, must be separated altogether, having two ministries, because the last time I visited the office there in Pretoria, I have cooked for the whole day. Even those who have cooked for the 350 grand, I don't think they can cook in that office. So, that office is already overworked. Number two, I'm also have a concern about the bill itself, because it does not talk about too much of empowering our people. Number one, a lot of people got licenses, some have got mining rights, some they've got wholesale licenses. But at the end of the day, it's a license only, they cannot even get assistance or to fund whatever they are reaching that they may having. So, if this bill can be at least empowering those people who have those licenses, who have some efforts to do those licenses. And lastly, Chair, I'm concerned about clause thirty-four, which talk about the twenty percent killing interest in all petroleum rights. So, if you can clarify us about that clause thirty-four in this document. And lastly, if you have this kind of meeting or this kind of session, at least if you can have the document at the end before, so that we can analyze those clauses, because sometimes when you have a lot of clauses, you may shoot yourself in the head, agreeing on something that you have never get the opportunity to go through it. Thank you very much.
Kialiboha, mudula stulo, na kena Re Maluleke and then kisamo wot number twenty-eight, eh khone mo Mahiking Local Municipality, kota masapala wasale khaie wa mo Mahiking. Kisekesa mala utewo onu, mala tchomo onu o, mudula stulo, kakena bu tata li one me, nteneki bata kha tchala bu kye, ne khorba khonali di tamo ze beedi, kaman zoma we ma pata ama beedi, a di randi minerali eh mo koli petroliamo eh kibu tata. Solosase ntswe nyang, kina kha ya kore haribu akha nyah mala tchomo onu o rinalo one mala tchomo onu o kha wonali ja kha eke di eh utchomelela ba tuwa ba empower eh uwa khae la monken enzijalo, kala bakalang, kala bakalakor ba tu ba na li di license ba tu ba na li di tchane lo za kudi ra di tiro, za mome opong, kaza kha epola la di kumo, kaza di minerali za ro na me le fa khonsu jalo, di license ze ba na le zone zone, kha kha ba na li di ba solala mulimo open, kaman zoma anga kha ba khonu kudi diri se za kudi ri sa di tchane lo ze uza bone za, kudi ra di tiro ze uza kha epola la di kumo kantya ya mo, rekopa kore mala tchomo onu waro na, onele kono eh ya kha tchomelela ba tu ba eh le kore ba neywe di license ze zin zin jalo. Mudula stulo, ncha engwe xape ya bu felo ne kara ta kui uma kafana fa kipo lelo na ya simola ya number thirty-four, kaman zoma clause number thirty-four ya ntswe nyang, kha khone ibua fana faka twenty percenti ya di petroliamo mesen kasi buan fela kabu kutoa ne kiko pa kore katswe katswe we tchalo se kama kote nele zin kore, re tchalo khae me ibile ncha engwe xape, eke bata kha kha kisa kia kore harinzi rana di ku kwa ne zidi tchane le zino ze eke ta han onzu ubua ka di pola lo na zini za simola, di clauses oka bua leru na utweri toko mane, mo le to kha la kha ha onzu ora tchalo se za tone, kha khone harasa diri jalo re sana di toko mane zini zin jalo re felle za na riduma la na uwe, na kasa solosersa kona kosebala kaja lusersa zin 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 za bu tata, ha di tiro di tiro kama kha onse jalo. Ra leboha mudula stulo.
Dumela Afrika Bora yo bua mfa yemi mfa ki advocate siamo molaula koto ku Setlahole, Anda Ralukulu Kali Municipality ke me fa kuduma la na le mala tchomo oreng petroliamo isanize ho farolo kha mwai, li di minerali babaka ma kholu ilohore, babaka ma kholu ilohore, kha 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 koko eh re le basha kana re le ma Afrika Bora kabunti eh re kha tiro eh ne bu kha tiro burisa ku kubisi nse kholo ya ya ne kiti ke me fa kuduma la kore petroliamo li minerali a di farolo kha mwai, kabu twa pe ibile se wa xape kia kore eh se kari, ekari tusaka, farolo kha nyoe ekari, ekari tusaka kha kha kudi kha 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 ya lo kuani, mona kenyaro na kaja laka, kaja lasekese kopanki kore, kiko pa beelele di pele ba wa na ba tchalele lo kore uwe la kase kore fitela le sere se batla kalu itse mo tana wile a re, komu kha kensaba lo kuwo tchle, kireki kialiboha.
Thank you very much, Chair. I advocate siamo molaula from Setlahole. I support the bill, Chair, as it is, and then for the reason that, as it says, it says that the minerals must be supported from the petroleum, and I agree with that. And my key reasons here are the fact that this will empower young people or South Africans at large, because most of them are in the state of joblessness. In other words, they are not employed and they are suffering due to that. And then one other thing that I think is taking place is that their joblessness, state of joblessness is causing lawlessness. So, that is the problem that we have. And also, I would like to make mention of the fact that this will make actually petroleum plus the minerals to be separated, and each and every one of them to stand on its own. Now, if that is the case, this is something that will help to reduce the price of fuel, because it is very at the moment, so it will help a lot with that. So, I want to really appeal to our leadership to take steps towards that direction. As that honour person says, it's not always that a cow releases all is dung. So, I'm not going to say everything. I will also be stating my points very, very briefly. Thank you very much, Chair.
Good afternoon, Chairperson. My name is Salih Matiba. I am from Ward Eight, under Mahiking Local Municipality, led by Councillor Murubani, ANC. I would love to appreciate our parliament for coming to us, especially on the portfolio committee on mineral and energy, on petroleum and resources development bill. We hope this will not be the last time that we see you here. We expect more of your visits to address to our issues and things that affect us as residents. Conduct more workshops for us for understanding. And of course, as women in this country, we need to participate, and we want to participate in the resources of our country. And we really want to be given a chance to continue participating. I want to thank you, and I stand here to say I support this bill. Viva Comrade Ma Keke! Viva! Viva Comrade Volmarans! Viva!
Kialiboha, kobe na kha ni, mudula stulo, na li na lamike Salih Matibela, Ward Eight, kota mo Mahiking Local Municipality
It's Matiba.
Oh, Matiba, pardon me for that. Salih Matiba. And then from Mahiking Local Municipality eh len kafatas khabo itelele di pele jo kharre Murubani, yo eh len le lokola ANC. Kia itume la, mudula stulo, kobo parliamente itlefana kape la kha ro na eh portfolio committee ya ro na, ja kafa elefano, kota kubisa za lorna ka di tombe la za di minerali li energy eh mala tchomo onu o waro na ubua mfa nfa ka eh tokafatso ya eh di tombe la za ro na za di minerali li energy, re tumela tata. Me ibile ngene kara ta fela kha tchalo sa koseka nyana fela kere ai eske ya nale to la lo na la ncha le la bu felo di ra khorba lutlen xape, mo le to lele ngombo kha utso ne, kala bakalakore di ncha zene zo kota kona katiro nfa nfa, di are ama ro na ja kha ba ahi rekopa di workshop, zede o ketsa kiling, fela ja kare nilili zedi ngwe meri kopa kore ba sadhi, ba tchomelele uwe, ba empoweri uwe eh le khorba bata ba khone kota ya karulo mo eh di tombe la zini za ro na za di minerali rekopa khorba lurne chance, lurne sebaka, kore kha kha kudi ra jalo eh re ba rata ho ikue la tata, le kha kala leza tata uwe na mutu kha khorana Ma Keke, le Revolmarans kobo lele fa kape la kharana fana fa, lutle mo koli se kha, ba rialiboha baha izu.
La kitu medise ba tubo tchle, moline la mora na waro na jesokresta, amen. Nakali bitso, ki bitwa Sina Mutobi kitala kobe Business Flay Wa Twenti I support this bill ya minerals and petroleum and gas upstream kitu malana le kore hunsi we petroleum, mo gese le mo minerali kore huneli progress, mona kenyaro na ya Afrika Bora I support this bill kha khone hanzi haule belela re le ba toba nzo, re salese komo ra koo haule bela this tere niya petroleum upstream hanzi koti wotla fikela, eh le ba toba sue ku kohu dimu ya non kona ten kha yone, kota ritusa, re le ba toba nzo kore le ro na re kha ne kota ya karulo mo khue one kia supporta bili ye kha kore itlo kori tusaka kha khone bu kha kadiro wi le kohu dimu, itla ta efo kuza bu kha kadiro, mona kenyaro na kia supporta this bill kore iri tusaka re le ba toba nzo kore le ro na re kha ne kua apply la di license, za kore le ro na, re za me so khebo ya petroleum kia supporta bili ye kha khone itlo kuri tusaka, kodi sa muruo wa na kha ya ro na ya Afrika Bora ibile itlo kuri tusaka, lo kodi sa tiriso ya petroleum eh mona konyaro na itlo kori tusaka lo kore huneli di kabo lo kote zin zin, mona kenyaro na. Kialiboha.
Thank you very much, Chair. My name is Sina Mutobi from Business Flay. I support the bill, this matter of petroleum being separated from the minerals. I do support that thought as well. And I also support this because this will really help us a great deal, so that we can see some progress taking place right here in South Africa. I support the bill, because when you look at the facts, you will see that the blacks are still way back. It's always white people right at the top there, taking part in this. I support the bill, because it will actually afford us, the blacks, the opportunity to take and participate in it. And I support it also, because it will help us to reduce unemployment, which is a problem. I support the bill, because it will help us to also be able to apply for licensing and to be able to run the petroleum businesses like the rest of the other people. I support the bill, because I know that it will contribute to economic growth in our country, and it will bring a lot of development. I support the bill.
Kialiboha, ma kiu me kiswa na baha izu obu anha kie hetolanto ahae kutsua Ward Twenty-Eight motasakha, motama isi baha, councillor KP Motsumi kabu wa vapi le fela kitu manana le bili ye kosa kha kha nyah petroliamo li di minerali me ki nale ziti nyongwe ja kha kibu le our beautiful speaker abuaka ro na bawar na le ma hatse a a tlimu anu a ku metse sile khae ezinele zin kore ra zinyan, ya tirison ku vitela sunu ezwa na le ye ja kha re le mo kha mu na kenyaro na basha wa le mo tlasa khatelu ya bu koka tiro mo kolen kore eh kila helleza kapu tonyana ya kore langas kika ike re ya karabo khone jano kore eh ro na re basha ba na kha ya ya ro na re fitela yang eh di di basic requirements za koo zena mo karulo ye ya tama iso ya bili ye. Kialiboha.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Peti eh Intoahaye. I support the bill very much, especially the fact of having minerals and petroleum being separated. Now, as one of us previous speaker actually said, eh he made reference to the lens that some of us have in a rural setup as to how can we actually put them to a good use in conjunction with the matter that is related to minerals and the resources. The fact is that we've got a lot of young people who are unemployed and we are actually having a problem where eh we cannot... And then I have a question in connection with that eh. Yeah, I can't see my nose, sorry Chair. But anyway, the final thought that I have here is that as young people right here in our land, now, what can we do to be able to reach the basic requirements? Actually, that will allow us to put our lens to a good use so that we also can have this bill, minerals and petroleum actually benefit us. Thank you, Chair.
Chairperson, good afternoon. My name is eh Roal Masidi. I'm standing here before you from eh Lachtenbeck, Ditoa Wotla. A very problematic eh area in, in our province. There's a whole lot of issues in the municipality of Ditoa Wotla. But eh having you here, and I believe that you're going to assist us, eh Chairperson. Yes, I'm under eh Gobas Fantonor, that is the person that is leading eh the district. But yes, once more, I really appreciate your presence and eh allow me also to encourage you to eh reinforce your committee. Bring more eh committee members so that with more numbers in the committee that will assist us, eh you know, to, to solve our issues particularly in Ditoa Wotla. Eh Chairperson, I'm also going to indicate that there's a, a very popular company called eh North West Coopracy, very popular in Lachtenbeck. And eh these people, according to me, they are very powerful. They are resourceful and eh it seems like earmarking fuel stations. Given opportunity or there's an opportunity for them to, to buy any fuel station, eh they'll be always ahead of that. And obviously, this is to benefit them. Eh this is to benefit them as eh North West Coopracy, North West Coopracy. But Chairperson, please, eh I'm asking humbly eh for you to investigate eh thoroughly on this bill to make sure that the end results of the bill is for the best benefits of the black people. Because al- already eh there's a lot of people that are already benefiting from opportunities that are given from them eh that are coming from the content of the bill. But it seems like we are being forgotten. So, please make sure that whoever that benefits from this bill eh those are rightful people eh and we also have to contribute eh to the best benefits of the bill. Thank you, sir.
Ki aleboha, bakholu. La kidume di se. Ki mamotlolo sa Radini. Hozako Ratu Local Municipality wa twelve under Councila Dipeko. Bakholu ki emi monache ka wa komiti. Ki mezi bakholu ba wa twelfe Madiboho. Ronar lako wa twelfe. Ridumalanale mola otlomo o, otlilinga parliament. Hawalu hulu ponele beleyaka eh separation ya petroleum resources and mineral energy. Ki wana itlo taka di petroze. Hawalu hore na bomme le basha. Cause petroleum, petroleum industry, ki industry eh hoo. For an example, if itlamomose ngaro na koratu. Ritlo benefita releba chibaratu. Hawalu hulu mo di resources, mo di resources in sa petroleum. Rele bomme. Rehane hoo apply di license. Hore rehane, re reke eh the resources eh hotoamo petroleum industry. Re supply le like booty factory or booty shop. Itlo fokuza botloka tiro bo ilo hore botenle temo muto ngaro na. Like energy company hai itlamomose. Itlo create tamosebe ti omongata hobe ni. Hozama di paype fati. Di paype se hori di zamaye twanze hoo chipe. Ha hoo chipe ajalo. Banabashaba benefita holo hulu tamo. Ki aleboha.
Chairperson, greetings. Eh my name is Mamotolo Sara from ward twelve. I'm standing here before you representing eh Madiboho Ratu, the community that I'm coming from. And what I'll be submitting to you, it will be the same word eh that will also accommodate the people that I'm living with at Ratu. We from the location that I just mentioned above, we fully agree with the bill. We are very happy with the initiative from the parliament eh to, to separate eh minerals from petroleum. And with this, I foresee that this initiative will eh give us an opportunity eh to get some jobs that will create actually more job opportunities, particularly to us as, as women. You know, we will be more accommodated into this. So, we are happy with the bill. It will create a lot of eh opportunities for us. I thank you, sir.
Thank you very much eh for your inputs. Very valuable indeed. And eh still on the bill. You have not deviated from the bill itself and we are very happy for that. Now, there's only one question on the second round, but there is one question that I missed on the first round that I think is important. The question was, who will hold the ten percent? Is it the chiefs? Is it the community? Or who? Eh I, I wish to go back to that question. To say in the MPRDA as it is now. You know, Mus eh, I can't apply for a right, I get a right. Eh as a person who's coming from far, I just come and mine. I must first do public participation with you in that area. Now, it depends on the application that has been made because it can be made in twofold. You can either make a community, what do they call? Community eh. What is this eh? Eh eh fund that eh will belong to the community. Something like what eh, yeah, yeah, trust fund. Eh you can agree on a trust fund and make an application in that regard. Or a company can say, we want to give eh twenty-six percent to a person. Now, depending on what you will say, Nina, in your imbezo and that public, public participation, which will ever register, you'll then choose which one is better for you. Eh I know here in the North West, the, the chiefs and kings are well organized. Eh they talk, they take a root of trust. And that's why eh, what is that chief tendency in Rustenburg? Ba Fugeng is doing that and they're doing it so well eh compared to eh other chiefs in the, in the country. So, you, you, you choose which one you, you would want. So, even in this eh amendment, those things still stand that the community in that area you're going to be mining or exploring eh gas and eh oil, whatever the case may be, still stands. Now, the question on the second round was from eh Mr. Russell Malulek. In fact, he said, I must just clarify section thirty-four. Now, when you get a license, there is something that is called a carried interest. Meaning government is, it eh like it's stipulated here that it must have a certain percentage. Exploration and production costs money. And therefore, the company, if it's shell, that wants to explore and produce. Government must also participate in what is called a carried interest cost. What do we mean by that? You must put a certain portion together with the company. There's no company that will do exploration and you just come and get the money. Eh you must put the carried interest that you're going to claim or the company is going to claim when you start making money. So, that's what basically it says here. It is different to an individual. Eh two things happen when it eh it's an individual. If you go and apply for eh mining right and you are given that ten percent, you can go and look for a person who is willing to put the carrying cost. But they can't do it to the value that leaves you with less than five percent. The second option is that it's provided here that the minister can reserve a block for black persons and then issue mining eh eh exploration rights eh to a black person. Now, if they struggle to get money or if the company is given that block, vice versa, the company can exclude a black person because they don't have money. And if they so do, they have to apply for extension to find that money and that would take their given two years. If they don't find a black person, then they are not ready to explore and mine. Am I clarifying you, Mr. Malulek? Thank you. Eh good people, I have no intention to close anyone out. Eh and that's why we, we, we do our work thoroughly so that there are no complaints eh to parliament about us having closed the meeting before the time. Eh so, I have no intention to close anyone out. I will check. Are there further hands? Eh I had excluded one. Yes. Two. Keep your hand up, my brother. Two. Three, four. Eh five. Six. Eh. Are there people who are, are repeating? Okay, where, where am I? Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. How many do we have now? Ten. I'm closing now. If we have ten. Let's allow it. Okay. So, because we have had sufficient inputs and some of them became reputations, eh we will limit the time to exactly three minutes. And let's avoid eh reputations. If you are covered by another speaker, you're just coming to support or reject, it's well and good. Eh number one.
Dimelamba holo. Ki na le rey bilal pita selwan. Ki taha ke limo Africa Bora. Extension thirty-nine, ward thirty-three. Eh akite hobo wa tata. Ki kachekele tata ki wana, parliament eh eh amenta malao twanaleo. Ka hore. Hi Salih di wakatola since from fourteen ninety-two. Since the beginning of the supremacy, you see, little inswarella. Since the beginning of the supremacy, has never been a law like this or a bill like this amended in South Africa, you see. Cause hakiti abasha ba khumpie no barona aba iti ha kubiwa ka petroleum jeli kubiwa ka eh. Eh ha parliament eh kadi ra di workshop o tiri. Hakia atla hobo wa kitlo hoo chaila elaki tumile ti mala o. Ki batahela hore, parliament eh le bakholo ba balente mo Africa Bora. Barute ba na ka hore. Petroleum jeli ki, ki vasili ni ra itasa yo neo. Eh iwo thokwa tata. Hayat twanela hore. Hakiti haya twanela hore eh khao kha ngweli limu kore etomo munki minerali. Etomo cementing. Malabanekile kudisane, kilo horo la di kong kudisane, honale lefu. Ki ve ki wana mu o, o betang, o, o, o karin goldu, ba ubita plaster sweli. Ve ki pulala kilo wa nikero mungu tlo hore kala hatile aba le zaya, aba le rekaba, hira ba tuaba, tamaaba, yaku britin. Aba boha ba tla hoo dira president eh be dira malao. Karo president eh ne twanze ba mu fe malao, horare fe me lao re, me lao teo. Eh ritume ti tata. Ki holi ti kodrihu kumori shobota kuliktimbe. Ki utlin tatoa bua, kadi oti di dira halan kuliktimbe. Ki hadi intume di si, hi Salih ki talo amole hati. kumpienu kuepiwa, kos paku kuepiwa, plaster santa hal, samente ha, spaku ha. Batu ba kodrihu kuba bambatena skolo hal, kaba benefiti, kaba seppes dira halan, haliko twenty-five fea kaba mema tsarukwa. Di wardi ba ho lo linsharelen, di wardi nakiti li di wardi aba luiti, ward nine, ward three, ward ten. So kumpienu kidi wardi fe la, di are loa ta oh. Ward nine u honale ba tuaila ngurbalo alade. So remori wardi, it's not a joke, it's a serious matter. An act of revolution is an act of culture, see? So parlamentaruna ibi relisin, tle tshwanse hori lerutiwe. Ka nineteen eighty-three, baho lo ba kohaye, kha ufili drihuku, ba ile ba hoodusiu, ba isiu, hakie complaining, I'm just kiki ah. Ba hoodusiu, khoti honale mahala, hadrihuku hal, khoti kua kuepiwa mahala, ba hoodusiu, ba isiu, kos springbokpani. Kumpienu matuwa le, ba duti, hapula ina ba na ba skolo, aba iskolo, ngutro ba tata ela hal. Mar mahala ting, atshwanse hori atsinye motlakas, motlakasu tuke. Did you know that through your feces, you can light electricity? Eh, kik tumela parlamentaruna ibe diri Malau teu ontinjana, mo kialaboh.
Thank you very much. I thank you very much, Chair. And then, my name is Leremi Pitasilwane. And then, I'm from South Africa, from extension thirty-nine in ward number thirty-three. I'm not going to be too long, I'm just going to say a word or two. But I must say, I'm very much impressed with how parliament has taken time to amend this law. Because you see, since the year fourteen ninety-two, which was the beginning of supremacy, well, you'll just bear with me for mentioning that fact, but since fourteen ninety-two, which was the beginning of supremacy, there had been, there has never been a law like this in South Africa. I don't even know whether our young people in this country actually know what we're talking about when we make reference to petroleum. And I would like really a parliament to have some more workshops for us and to make sure that all the adults that we have right here in South Africa can be able to teach their children about petroleum. Do you know that this petroleum is actually something that benefits us? It is like a vaseline, we actually apply it onto our skin. So they need to teach them this. That one time when I was moving from one era to the next, I think I was on the way to Disaneng. I came across a type of soil which I couldn't understand, but one thing that I noticed, actually I was on my way to gather wood. I noticed that it had a bad soil. So by looking at it, I knew that someone very wise could actually come by, buy that land and bring up some changes to it and actually involve the president to actually make something good out of that land. Look, I grew up in a three-roomed house and this was in Lake Timbek. And then around that area, I've seen that there are some people who actually explore and dig out some cement. I don't know whether people know how much of a benefit this can be. And this happens at ward number twenty-five of Mrs. Massitwara. People, I don't know, we've been talking about wards here, and all what I know about the wards is that these are houses that actually house the places that are housing patients in the hospital. Every time we're talking about wards, I don't know exactly what you're referring to. But on a serious note, parliament did very well. You know, in nineteen eighty-three, there were others who were relocated. I'm not complaining, but there were others who were relocated from drihuk to springbok, basically being taken away from a place that has coal. And, but now, do you know this fact that with inswana? Kore, kaman tla akaha, kacola kobe samolelo? Thank you, Chair.
No, no, thanks, thanks. Le kaskalare kuhu du tuakere. Munna runa we webe ilepila hor, tshwanse ru ngwele. Ya nu re, re ektingche, nasa kama kanako, kahore na kohae, irema ka fopifon. Heraka naburipana. O garatshwalamusolo, kahore honale khangenwe ma sisie. Eh, I support the bill, but I have only one request. I only requested the government to do a proper investigations, that they must make sure that the beneficiaries of that land or the beneficiaries, whether is it a king or is it the community, they must benefit from the mine or wherever go tlabenabadi ba etza diloting because of Kokeleini, renale mine, Kubotshabelo. So hutle moto afita ayepa mine, so half etah koe pa mine, aba ntsabatu from that mine, aba isamo mafiki mora Matabama. So those people, le haoka ayah uahusha, but then those people, they are not benefiting from that mine. Le mezi amizi, bashota mezi, basokolaka mezi, mare honale mine kwa. So government must make sure that those people, that batu ba bua leba ilongor, ba kuetza di mine, ba kuetza di diloteu. They must make sure that the beneficiaries, they benefit from it. Ba geshata fe la mo, ri taridula, retsanya di meeting. We must go out there, we must work, we must go and do some investigations. We must go and check, retsama yengriyam kudi mining, resheba kora, ami a the beneficiaries ba benefita from the mine. Kialaboh.
Thank you very much. My name is Dumisang Julius. And I would like to just make out a point to say that in Kolini, in Butshabelo, there is someone who actually came up with a mine. And then just after finding this, he actually relocated all the people away from there to Ramatabama. And people are now, wherever, they are struggling a lot even with water. So now, what I would like us to do is to make sure that people who come up with these mines, like this man did, they must make sure that the people from that surrounding are the ones who actually will benefit. Why don't we go out and actually investigate? And find out as to what are they doing? Maybe if parliament can help us to do all of that so that people are not being removed from a very rich kind of a land which they had.
Thank you. He also spoke in English.
Ho. Eh, kinnakus kimbekai mudiboa. Ba ba ngitika ombi, kijwa kile ko Kokeleini, Kabalohang, ward eighteen. Ki motlas ha, eh, councilor, Mamereki Plaki. Karata kore, kile buhe. Eh, baba zonko parlamenting. Hotla kore, itisika ha, di bilisi ti, ti di ntsasebatlanga so ne. Lennakile, eh, bawa eighteen ikeri kadi, kadi amohayela di bilisi eu. Disya mi kiduma lalale so ne. Ahore, eh, monako ngefitiling, kana kwele aparte eighteen onaba thwabanso. Neresina, kito kaha, eh, kaha, kaha petroleum ole di mineralsi. Like odi mine ineresakone kore. Renlele di licensesa horreka, owna di mine, yalo le yalo. Ya nu di bilisi na diare letela horreka, tla honere. Renlele, le, 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 di licensesa horreka di owne. And then, eh, le kore, di, di, di company ti di ntsi ti di, ti di tonata petroleum. Di lo hori letela kore, ri ti kaha, kaha petroleum ole, le, body, body case, like, body case siu, neresaitore. Kore rekreya kumininga rekreya, eh, diamond. Rekreya katila horre, maybe ra, ra, plaster, horre, plaster le tla palila rekreya diamond, tshwanse rekreise. under the councilorship of Mamereki Plakis. Thanks very much for the parliament's presence here before us. And Chair, I would just like to say that we are very grateful that you are here as parliament and that you are actually coming to inform us about the bills that you have. And I support these bills because in the past, in the days of the apartheid regime, we did not have any opportunity to learn about these things. We didn't learn anything about petroleum or minerals nor about the mines. And now, these bills actually are now affording us an opportunity to be able to have some licenses and to be able to own a mine. And also, the bills actually allow us to be able to be licensees. When we apply for these, we can actually be able to obtain a license for a mine. And we know also that there are some big companies of petroleum. Now, these are the companies that will also afford us an opportunity to know about petroleum and about gas. Because as I said, we did not know anything. We didn't even know that we could get a diamond from the mine by blasting or even a gas for that matter. But we are grateful for this, Chair, and I want to thank you very much.
Okay. I'm the president of Northwest Community Learning Center College. I could say this thing, Bakolo. If this bill will be accepted and it moves forward, a successful movement, and it establishes somewhere else, like not around Mafiki or Lelitimaki, how will the community or how will the community will benefit from it because of it being established somewhere else, not around our areas? And then now we are here busy, you are supporting it. And the reason why I'm supporting it because of, I believe that it's needed as countries and then a province, we need a movement to grow and to move forward. As I present, as I believe this, there's a lot of mining, minerals in our country. And then, uh, thank you.
I'd like to greet you all, all parliamentarians and that's here. All MPLs, you are welcome in our midst. And we want to take this opportunity and make use of it because it's not all the time that you guys come down. So it's good to see you on the ground, keep up the good work. We are here to just make our input on, sorry. Then I greet the houses large, each and everyone in the community. Basha, be greeted, we love you all. I'm Julie Amets, I'm from Ziaris, Henryville, Ramotsiri, Mweilwa, municipality. We welcome the bill. I'm going in, somewhere right at the door. Thank you for bringing petroleum and this and the workmanship of the mine to us. Because as you know, in Northwest, we have a lot of hills, mountains, and there's really wealth there and poverty is very strict in there. Our community at large, if you can come down on the ground at night and see what are we going through. So this will even help with light, solar, and everything for our communities, those who cannot afford. Because a lot of people cannot afford with a lot of things with our lights. Everything is expensive. And just remember, you don't couple this electricity, no? We pay cash, whether you have it or not, old, young, old, everyone, we pay cash. So it's a pain for us to struggle like this when we don't have this. So thank you for being here and helping us with this bill. I'd like to know how are we going to control the bill? And how are we going to control the mining? Hence, we have our Zama Zamas. And I feel the Zama Zamas is out of hand. I don't know how to say if our state is afraid for them. But as I know, even on the floor, on the ground, even the police struggle with them and people get killed. So please help us in this thing, it is very hard. So people cannot come from Lesutu. Let us know our rights, help our people. Help your house first, before we help, we look outside, please. Let us help our country, I thank you all, work on Zama Zamas.
I'm Julie Amets. And then, I'm from a parliament, I'm in Fapela, I'm in Fano, I'm in Tchata, I'm in Teng, I'm in Teng. I'm in Tchata, I'm in Teng, I'm in Teng. 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 I'm in Teng, I'm in Teng.
Thank you, thank you, Gyalaboh. Bakolo, I'm in Tchata, I'm in Tchata. 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 Because unemployment, I'm in Tchata, I'm in Tchata. But then, what I'm saying, Rona, really, Zetla Mo, Zetla Shas, Zetla Sa Petroleum. Then, dealer Jean, Lee Matapa, I think. Because there are so many cases, they're the same from two thousand and nineteen, I think, and two thousand and twenty, up until twenty one. They consider it this COVID problem. So, Rona, the dealer, I think, these cases, they create dealing unemployment. Since well, we are targeting the mines and all other possible resources. Examples, the cases, they're the same around our places, Mafiki, Slari included, Nafaj, I remember. There are so many cases where people lost their jobs because the reasons are based on the COVID problem. But eventually, there are people who are stacking some money, I think. Because there was this housing project, something was so nice for our black people, but went out because of, I'm in Teng, I'm in Teng. It's gone, because they are losing money. So my question is, labor law, why is taking so long on their cases? Because all what you get the feedback is say, for the past two years, because of COVID nineteen. The last but not least, when I come to the Ward twenty-two, Kikalosessin, Keshul, Khabashani. Kikalakoa Ward twenty-two, under my councillor, Rampe. Please, we need service delivery as the president promised us. So if the councillor is not doing that, what we must do? Should we close the road, we bend the schools, or what we must do? Please, that one is not like to saying, it's a problem of saving a budget on all this. But please, the councillor must come to us, as Ward twenty-two, Kuma Kubu. We are not rich, we are struggling. We used all the reserved money we have to build our houses. We don't want RDP as much as we want water. RDP, we have only less than thirty people around our village who wants RDP now, as Asian as we speak. But not all of us, yes, we build our own houses. But please, we want to support those who want all, they need those service deliveries. Water, roads, please, those are on our knees, thank you very much, thank you.
Your name, sir?
Joel Motlaadi Khabashani.
Chairperson, greetings. My name is Joel Khabashani. Chairperson, I have two to three concerns or points that I want to bring forth. Firstly, my first question is, how are you aiming to put this bill into application? How do you go about implementing this bill? Because we have a commitment to lead the community and to make sure that there's progress within our communities. Particularly from the midst, from the context of labor law, we have that commitment to make sure that our communities are progressing and there's developments. So I want to emphasize on this, if you can just explain to me, how do you go about implementing and making sure that this bill will benefit us? Secondly, I would like to reference to the crisis that you had, that I believe that most of us were aware of, what refers to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, until almost twenty twenty-one, where we all faced with the COVID nineteen crisis. So also, Chairperson, to add on cases relating to Mafiki and Nafaj, where most of our families lost their jobs and nothing has been done with that. We are hoping that labor law would give us feedback on those cases of criminalities. And we believe that some of the people contributed more on stealing money and reaching themselves with the name of people being down scaled in companies because of COVID nineteen. So it seems like people were hiding behind the issue of the COVID nineteen, but you know for sure and for effect, that some of the people are stealing money in such companies that I just highlighted. So, Chairperson, how are you going to make sure that this bill is effective and is running smoothly without any complications? And for sure, we know that our government has been faced with a lot of complications. So it is my concern to understand how you're going to go about this. Furthermore, Chairperson. We're still waiting, and I'm going to reemphasize again on labor law that we are not getting any feedback in terms of the criminality activities that I've just mentioned. Most importantly, we need service deliveries, particularly in the area that I'm staying at. Our councillors are not coming to party, you know, to satisfy the society in terms of service delivery. I know that there's people that really desperately need the RDP houses. But we can also build our own houses, we are not so desperate with the RDP houses. Most importantly, what we need is water, actually. So tell me, do you want us to close roads? Are the citizens here to call? 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 Fela, we need clear return on this issue as to, please, look into it, come back to us and put more effort in terms of this bill. Gyalaboh, I'm in Teng.
Afternoon, everyone. My name is Disamona Lede. I'm a councillor of Mahigeng Local Municipality. I do not support the bill, however, support the amendment as follows. Close thirty-one, subsection one. Percentage must change to fifty-one percent on the basis of participation and representation, having to reflect the demographics of the country, where black people make up at least seventy percent of the population. Close thirty-four, subsection two. The law must say fifty percent of all petroleum products found in South Africa must be produced and processed in South Africa to contribute to local industries. Close thirty-five, subsection three. The state can dilute its participation to no less than fifty percent. And lastly, the bill must compel the department to establish industries that will ensure the local production of technologies and equipment that will be used in the industry, thank you.
Gyalaboh, I'm in Tchata, I'm in Tchata. 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 Thirty-five, subsection number three. I missed section number thirty-three, yeah, so I'll find it, Chair.
No, thank you very much, Chair. My name is Dinpreme, Kefom, Watleva. I've been hearing previous speakers stating the words that they are from, under the leadership of so-and-so. And unfortunately, in Watleva, we don't have any leadership, so...
What just happened here? Interpreter. What just happened before you started? It's thirty-five, section thirty-five, three, subsection three. Okay, all right, sorry, my brother.
I will find, Chair, can I continue?
I apologize.
Thank you very much. Chair, I stand to not to support this bill as it is. However, Chair, I support the amendment of the NPRDA as opposed to introducing a new bill. And because of the following reasons, Chair. The legislation about any petroleum resources must establish a state and petroleum company that will explore, produce, trade, transport, and sell oil and natural gas and not only issue rights to multinationals. These multinationals companies do not want to pay taxes, do not want to hire our people, and do not want to take responsibility of the environmental damage. They are all involved in aggressive tax avoidance, profit shifting, and base erosion. It is not true, Chair, that the bill in its current form, in his state participation, it does the opposite and hand over the petroleum resources to Total, Shell, and soon other multinational will get their stake. We reject, Chair, the clause that says only ten percent of the upstream petroleum resources must be reserved for BEE, when black people make up more than eighty percent of South Africa's population. There is enough and clear evidence to show that BEE does not work. A more distributive model of revenue from resources is to use a state-owned company that must pay profits to the national revenue fund, not royalties but profit. Therefore, Chair, I stand to reject this bill with arrogance it deserves, thank you very much.
Gyalaboh, I'm in Tchata, I'm in Tchata. 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 Eighty percent, because I'm in Tchata, I'm in Tchata. I'm in Tchata, I'm in Tchata. I'm in Tchata, I'm in Tchata.
Gyalaboh, I'm in Tchata, I'm in Tchata. 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 I'm in Tchata, I'm in Tchata.
Chairperson, greetings, my name is Lydia Tejane. I'm proudly from Lachtenbeck, Lachtenbeck, Dzobotla, from Ward eighteen. Gyalaboh, I'm in Teng, we thank you very much for the bill. But after you put this bill into effect, we are just curious as to how far would it benefit, especially the youth of Lachtenbeck, Lachtenbeck, Dzobotla. We plead with you that whatever steps that is going to be taken after the implementation of the bill should seek to take care and support the youth of Lachtenbeck. That is my first point, Chairperson. I have here also a second point that I need to highlight, but as a matter of concern, around the ten percent proposal or issue that is contained on the bill, this ten percent, Chairperson, is very little. It's very little, I don't think it will be sufficient to accommodate us in Lachtenbeck. And as a matter of fact, in Lachtenbeck specifically, there's areas that are very rich in minerals. And therefore, maybe if you can see to it that you bring along some geologists to come and assess those areas in making sure that people that are residing in those areas can also be educated further in terms of obtaining licenses. And therefore, as a result, that will help us also to them particularly to benefit from the minerals that will be found in those areas. So we plead with you that bring assessors, come and inspect the areas, like I mentioned, the geologists, so that people can be assisted going forward, thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you very much, Chair. Let me take this opportunity to greet this esteemed committee and this august house. My name is Ikopulent Latsana. I am from Ward eighteen, Mahigeng, and also a SACP district secretary. Chair, indeed, it is a great idea to separate the two entities. But what one is looking at is that it only speaks of exploration, of which is exploitation. Because benefication of these minerals are for rich countries. You find a student in Britain learning and studying how to beneficiate African minerals, whereas a student in Lachtenbeck is studying administration, and there are a lot of mines around that student. So what we are saying is that let the government improve on its benefication. So what we are saying is that let the government improve on its benefication processes or maybe give a thoroughgoing definition of benefication. Because lack of that, Prince Abou, Zama Zamas, as they spoken. Let us look at the situation in Botswana, where the Pierre's Company and Botswana government have entered into a contract which says fifty-one forty-nine benefication. And there are no Zama Zamas in Botswana. Yes, we appreciate the fact that the bill is considering environment and it speaks of protection of wetlands and the environment as a whole. It is a progressive move only to be copied by other departments like the South African National Defense Force and military veterans. We support the bill. Maybe it will help us in understanding the politics of energy. Thank you very much.
Kialabohamundulasstulo. Kial dumedi sa bot kaba fano. Nali nalameki Iqopole Tlatzana. Iqopole Tlatzana oho tamo wat number eighteen. Kila loka la SACP. Kapeki mo kwa le edi, mo districti elo ya rona. Mundulasstulo. Ki rata kanye enue e inke ya kore. Renalidi tamose peritere kaukan tsuen. Kamato manri buaka. Kaukangoa kadi minerali. Mo koli petroleumo. Me sesengusera shtokomela fano faki kore. Ho buiwa fano faka kanya exploration. E rengha isengwa tirison ebefeto ha ena exploitation. And then rabata fano fa kape lohokokomela kore dilodiro solakalamolemo. Kanako uvi kela ngoana wa mu ituti ko nare e tsana liburitani. Ashara kano fano fa leho ituta. Khoba nakafa dikumo zenu dika solakalamo lemo. Kajo na hadise di boney. Me mona kenyaro na hui tuta singusesele. Sesasatshane leseu. Mo hobo ansalelo morahongu katsala unwe. Kajalo he. Rabata horu hui tuta kanya kore dika solakalamolemo jaang. Bengbatzo ne. Kamanto manko kore janunjana. How oka levela ku na ha e tsana le na ha ya Botswana. Olebela di tamose di tsana leza bo di Pierre. Le di tamose di kolo sa me bohona ko Botswana. Boni haba buaka benefication. Ba buaka fifty-nine to forty-nine. And habana ma tata tsana labo Zama Zama baronar na lebene monemo Afrika. Mo kaza mo Afrika ora. Me bile kape rabata kore. Kakhontoko bereko nalemo la komo onu. Hua akanyi diwe bo e mo joati kulu ho. Kamanto man environmental ya rona. Kore innense tchokomela se xile. Lahar nseru tsalapeli re dira. Katalapeli ensenjalo. Re lefela kochokomela kore. Tiro e ri dira. Ha e felleze ele e kaukanyang mafa. Pa a tsanentengokabo. Adirisa na mo. Mo kanyi ngeno kore banne mo yamo ehela mo koyo ne. Kajalo ra lebo kela. Mo la komo onu mundulasstulo. Kadi ntsa udi lemanasaka rata kodi bafapela kha kha.
Kialaboha, fere. Yo e memfa ke isekiel Joseph Molefe. Ko tulu njele se tla kola. E eighteen na akinseki du seki kuadi bua di bua. Mo eteleli pele kichu. Boha pela kha. Agito re akibora parliamente oro ke barungaba parliamente. Ne so se so kolo ke kore. Ba ti na keli esikare. Lokalosa tsora sepe. Mo diakinsalo. Lu sila kinone ekosa. Khobane loa bua. Loa ta mo koro na. Lo ka. Eighty bua ha e tsaneli tiro. Hakabo lokaloka mo koro na. Raliamorahere gana. Lokaloka tsotela re. Morahere wa South Africa. Ronaralibo eteli pele ya nuna. Ralutiti yana. Boni aditi lo kisi. Adisi yami kochotanreka dira. Lu bua ehela. Lu kliyo kore ntiyo. Lu kliyo kore ra lori. Lo akho dira e. Lo akho bua kato lokamo koro na ka twenty twenty nine. Kosa kolo kaka ha pe ni na koka baba unwe ha pe. Rabata kore paracha. Boni kore lahatsele ka. Me ra ra renalibo eteli pe. Lu duze laa kalo dira laa e le sepe. Lu ba le khasete. Ra bola. Bohoku koko kudi. Di minerala ki se renaliti maeni ki se motoko harona hadi dira le sepe. Mehala ra ra renalibo eteli pe. Yo ha relela eberelela mo kyo. Akolo chenchengkela ba ha e sumutu a chenchang. Bo eteleli pe. Sa mayon lohona ha. Lohona ha nira batoba. Kia ba uka barre barba itume. Na uki ni na ki itume le sepe. Lokaka e. Ka ngoana ha ngoana u itume la ha. Omotkela ka suwitsuki. Or ngoana ka ke kaka koto ropon suwitsuki. Ri itume la la. Ri itume la koba na lu duze fe la ba. Boni kore kodi rekala. Me lutii. Kodi rekala mo hatinda lo. Ale tsana le ma hasama. Di minerala se lu bua ngatse ne se. Lo ra lu dira rapatoba ba unwe. Esing baba de nga. Ngasero ma kese so konsi. Ahoka. Ke le mu lo re ra e. Baba unwe ba shule bantse ba bua. Loa tara pinayuni. Ke lo sa oka ka pinayuni. Baka echo bo eteleli pe lo diarona. Lahatse li. Mutuana omolo ba karre. Lu sila kinone ekosa. Ki bua sujana sa ha e. Ki musimana morulunki tjaasika koliya. Sa manlohoko chenchang. Ni na balunse lo la itumele. Oka se bua na kiseu. Oka bua na sepe. Ahoka na sepe. Kialaboha.
Thank you very much, Chair. My name is Mr. Molefe. I have been listening all along as people were talking. In fact, listening to you as leadership. I don't know, as you sitting here in front of us, are you actually members of parliament or are you messengers from parliament? I don't know who are you or what are you. So now, you've been sitting here and speaking all the time, but all what I speak here is a lot of words and no work. South Africans who are here, you say that you are their leadership. And as I say, it's just a whole bag of words without anything to show for. To tell you the truth, we've been looking at our land right now and what we find that is that there is nothing that basically has been accomplished. We've got mines in our land which actually have been rendered useless. And we have a leadership here who have nothing to show for. We, I want to ask you to go back. Go and change and change even the way you think about these things. I mean, everybody in the house here, they've been saying that they are happy. They are happy. For what? What are you happy for? You know, when a child is very happy is when you maybe come and actually offer them a nice candy. Then they show their happiness over there. But what do you have to show for us? What's happened really in our land? The minerals that you are talking about. You say that you want to use them to serve the people. But I know you are not actually using them to serve the people of your land, but you mean using them to serve people of other lands. In fact, up to this point in time, some people have already died. They have been listening to the very same thing over and over again, which you promised to accomplish, but nothing has been accomplished up to this point in time. Please go and make some changes. And I tell you, if you say you are happy about this, you know, it is very much like trying to bite your elbow, which you will never be able to do that, which means that happiness that you say you want to reach is very unreachable.
Tholo. Ntatezeke loke. Oh, cool. Ketsa ba kohoba mahfukuama pa tswa. Niketloro musimana tholaya non omoto namo kon. Reo ha uwa kaso konu sonu uwa kaso. Namar rasetlalo ha. Udlwel. Ronarima matate ngahor wa e kapa omolato. Wa e kohela omolato. Yanon, kanyakore rekatswa resiwa kinone. Ekhotza ya tlalo kanyeha. Kamai kutu aho. Me bonite ba kanki kore genereka versatla kakuanu. Klori sanaka mola o. Baba unwe ne baylore. Karadira katsa kamokwakoswanesengateng. Ka or kharitlisi projecta kakuanu. Ritlisa mola o. Odo ritusa ngoare. Hereta na ko projecte. Dilotsalo ne ebere ditlamalit. Oka tllos.
All right. So the Chair made mention. Obviously, you as donors, you know this idiom. We see why you know ne. It hurts and I don't have to try and explain it. But the Chair is basically trying to explain to say that, look, these things are obviously for the very near future where they will be obviously deliberating with some of the things that have been said here before us. And then it will be at that particular time that things that most of us are wishing for will come to fruition.
Yanon, karatla kasipese no obatile kore. Kanahoritlerifte reba reba lele veretama. Horitlaka rola to fatwa. Ka hori lekoha kangoko.
So we haven't really brought anything we can say that is tangible to hand to you. Because then if we do that, we'll actually be in the wrong. So we don't want to do anything wrong, but we just came here as dispatched. And then you, for now, going to have to accept the situation as it is.
Yanon, harre rebaro nga. Ebile rebo raparamente. Ebile rebaro nga balu na. Re malata alu na. Retlole tllosese tasi. Sesetlakelatsen koi departmente. Korre kremai kutlo le di titi nyotaro na. Kore herela komorahoko kari di bua kasona ennamola o. Oto ho amang. Oboki lewa kabo la kahu. Tlisa le morahola kaho lititi nyaha kahu motafuli.
And truly, yes, what we are here. We are members of parliament and we are also messengers, messengers of you. So what we came here obviously is to come deliberate on the bill that is before us or listen to actually your inputs, which will be deliberated at a later stage. And then we know that by the time when this happens and then we will then be able to make sure that each and every input that you brought forth to us is taken into consideration. So now that in itself will not be like we haven't brought anything here. It is something that obviously is in progress.
Mar mahfukuakho tla aman tla o tjeruhutwiler tlayloyi. Kakaniar tarheretlasasile lengretla tahrklaha riputese se.
And then we've taken note of your words, sir. Yes, we are going to go back. We want to think. We are going to brainstorm on these matters. And when we come back in the near future, we will bring you something worthwhile.
E what? Setla kuitumedi sa se o tholo.
It's something that is going to make you very happy, sir.
No problem. Yanon. Re mundulasstilo na wileka kanyakore ritloko. Kaufili kopo felon batirelo ya rona ya kukradikia kanyotalo na. Sabu bedi ke kore. Morahoko haafa. Kokuano te omola o. National Assembly. Kafa komiti tla bedi reharitse katen e tllosi se. E romance kabo rona. Ribwile kanyarona retlayba motafulen kakuale. He pasa etlaya kakua NCOPI. He NCOPI tumela zer diwile inlebune. Batla e fa presidente. Presidenta saineslo sebe ennamola o. Ebese simula se kua ama.
And then, so as the Chairperson actually pointed out, he did mention that we are slowly coming to the end of this exercise and of these public hearings. And now, what is going to happen with that is that we will be taking all these inputs and then they are going to be given to the National Assembly to be deliberated upon. And after that, then they will be handed on to the next house, which is NCOPI, who will actually work with them as well. Because each and every committee is deliberating on these things. And then as it progresses, and then if everybody is happy with the process up to the ultimate end, it will be handed on to the president to sign this bill into law. And once it is signed into law, it will be affecting each and every one of us.
Mo hongo rekatswa rasa dumela ne. Mola o obosa tekwi. Obosa kwenekunnamola o. Then retlasimula hapo konten koho tchokakala. So ke gidlotse pedi. Jer di tsapilesen kewamo. Jer losa inua ka presidente. Jerisa zamai pila ko parlamente leku NCOPI. Oho kola morahoko reklotses ketele skete. Retasana koho simula konken mar. Dika kanyotaro na ridya mo kese.
And so you'll notice that there are two points here. It can happen that perhaps when this bill is going through different departments, it may be rejected due to some reasons. And if that happens, then it will be taken back, perhaps, to be deliberated upon as it has been happening now. But if it has been accepted, then it will go through up until it gets to be signed finally by the president to actually make it into the law.
Ki fitise kanyakore mola wana o. Oele mola wana kakanyo. Osese ufitiseri tse konkuniya mahosi konnashnali. Ki kamori tse khoromo mafelon. A lenkore mahosi arona aameha. Kona lese teosa mahosi sesasatshara kani lemola o. Esfa bek esbo august last year. Yan nerreskala itharre trola mahosi karaya ra babale. Banale koba kopananti ba kanya. Karabatle kore. Batle batlo nana le rona boesengman. Bodikopa nunze. Nan te ba batso reso hosi savonle tukwabone kakoo kakoma sa eighteen kwa.
And then we would like to mention to you that this bill has actually been handed to the House of the Traditional Leaders. We want to make sure that we are not overlooking them. So they also have had an opportunity to make their inputs into it. This happened last year in August twenty twenty-two. And then this is basically the process that we follow to make sure that they also have an opportunity to do so. Because what we have for them is nothing else but respect.
Yanon. Mo kanyi ngetsama isana leforlente. Rea huputa puta. Ebereaka mama mosoriakoma tlosana. Refte retshara kana le kanyamu futao koma tlosana. Ebere fetela ko Rustenbecka ko Tlavani. Retshara kana le kanyamu futao. Mo bekinge tla ngroitima hapi weekende ore ebere. Felile tsa profensi ha oute. Etla belo kone anu riloko panan rele nosi. Reshuatla shuatla singu le singu sersekre le mori province in zero bo unwe.
So now what is going to happen is that from here, we are advancing to Matlosana, which is in Tlakzok tomorrow. We will be performing the very same exercise as we have been doing here today. And once we are done with that, we move forward to conduct the same public hearing in Rustenbeck. And then, once we finish with that, then we move to do the same thing in Johannesburg. And then once we are done, it is then that we will go and deliberate on all the inputs that we have received wherever we have been.
So ronarifitlo kobo kutlo. Batiro mahapi lele wone kense ke twa. Kia ko konklekwa na ke kileka kholi za batuvarona baparamente. Ke twa ra musakotla. Ke motwaraka kari tenapo. Ke re ritusa. Ka or kutlen ndato munala tata. Ndatowale rasta awa ka Kentucky ele. Yanon, nerabakanya rabata koba kanya botata bo leba Kentucky. Me ukare botata bo. Kabo kabo kaburi siyamele tota. Kasa koro lokra Kentucky or halo ikra. Mar kaburi siyamele tota. Me singusone. Ngabereloko leson. Ke re kona le serka tshaswanbi atla kaso.
So now you must have seen me going in and out in the last while. I've been going outside to try and make a call to the speaker. Because you remember there is a man who spoke about Kentucky. Yeah, so I'm not saying you're not going to get Kentucky or you're going to get some Kentucky. But it doesn't just look the way we wanted it to look at this present point in time. And so, but we would just like to say that a little bit of something perhaps will be there for you.
Yanon, khor leskan tarkemu tu ogu amaka. Ukare kutlo tlayo na Kentucky.
So now, for you not to say that I'm a liar. Yes, I think it will be the very Kentucky that shall be given to us.
Re di tse koro babaridira inlebune. Barahku hebatla tla ba. Kanya ka khori luchana. Zile tsa procurementi abatoba tswentzen baria pele. Ukare ditlatse ya matonaro nasile kaya moko tini bele ba oma.
So we've asked some of us members... So we've asked some of us members to rush and get everything ready because it looks like those whom we relied upon as far as procurement is concerned um are going to affect us negatively, not as the way we wanted, but eh things will be okay.
So kuobudiwe, kuale ko bo ramatla ba ma, ba ra ho na le moti namja, kirta berenali le le kha niya neyo. Eh, ne reko pa horu le ska tza me la kha gala. Le ska, le ska tso, ba tla tla ba kweniho le sefa, he ba tla, ka horu ha ba ya ko kha gala, heren tse re re tswarakanaya.
So
Ki kamori lingla tanya na, ne re leka ho eh ho ka horu, ba tla tla ba kweniho re, le ska uela ha eh, le sa, ha de tata kamoswa.
So we would like to ask you not to actually move far off here when we finish off so that it can be on hand to be able to stay view. We want you to receive some strength and sustenance within your stomach. And then we hope this is exactly how it is going to be.
Ho fitlafa, le nilele, rinilele, di resano mo ho e ente, le le la tleze, tza mo tlapizo, ntsedi ente, tse ri tza ma isana, le ser se tleze. Nkwa na halao ofremba tata. Me dilotse zo, tse ri tza na lezo, na re di documentile. Oka tso, onale seu se kuadi le, nsoka ba tla khoru re se tsiya, heri fitlako pele. Oka na ho sefa tafulele, eh, hele horu onale sapmishine. Aida tso, ko mo kha kongwa, ho kozako, we na as an individual corporation eh, er ta, er ta, kona koe fa, bombe ba, baba lenfa le. Mo ho di mo hamo, le sentenelili tlelezo horu leka di resa, emaili ya ko parlamente. Ya horu leka re, heren tse le na kana, ukana kana se, se se tza ma isana lese nere si bua, obata ho eda. Eskan na horu tzo, lezo konke, ota di resa um, mo kwakiyo wa 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 emaili, obitwang A boss. A wa a, boss wa B O S S at parliament.gov.za. A boss at parliament.gov.za. Eh, weki, A kotze wa kotze wa K O T Z E. Le oneke at parliament.gov.za. Yanon, ndate kotze ki olu onzenfale, hara, hara le tleleka, ka ba tu ba sin ten. Ki olu onzenfalo re le di diamaton, di brele. Eh, le me bosso ki olu ha se mu esimana, se le kwa, ki olu we mefale. Eh, le oneke eh, ke ka itza diya ro na fale. Di horo kela mo ho bo ne, den ba etsa horu heri lo di diska sa. Le lo na ebere tse, dilotza lo na, re di se koho.
So um you have made your inputs and then one thing that you are grateful for is that you spoke to the bill. You didn't deviate a lot out of that. And it may just be that there are some among you who have some things which they want to put down in writing, maybe some of your submissions. Well, we would allow you to do so by the use of two different emails. And then one of them is A boss eh at parliament.gov.za. And then the second one is A kotze, K O T Z E at parliament.gov.za. So, Mr. Boss is the man sitting over there, he's wearing glasses. We are not telling you about people who are not existing. Mr. Kotze, Mr. Kotze, yeah, we're not telling you about people who are not existing. That is Mr. Kotze over there. And there is Mrs. A A Boss over there. She's not white, she's got that surname, but that is it. So these emails are actually going to arrive into their inboxes if you want to actually avail yourselves to the writing of those emails.
Ko ko pa horu ki pu e, ka zo ka ho leboha, buinti nti ba ma councila ra ba re ba waning. Mo di tikulu ho ntsedi nguka ra basa ateka, ba tla kamo noke la. Speaker ra di le ti re ente, aku involva ma councila ra di le sen tlewa involva. Bo ba tu ba di komiti, tse di farloha ning, li di wote ka ho farloha na ka so na. Resanzenre re re re, re leboha ho mina kani. Ka ti re manan tchotlo, ele di le ngiha ho mobile sa, horu community te te, kweniho bo na horu eh le ba zazi.
Eh, I want to take this opportunity to thank many of the councillors who are here present. I think the speaker has done a very good job of eh involving them to make sure that they are here. And I want to thank you also, the councillors and different committees. These are the people who actually make sure that you are aware of one fact, of the fact that they actually care about you.
Refitise tza ma lebo ko councili ngialo na, le ko majoro inabsencia. Eh, kama fukwa o, kileboha ho mina kani, nan eh, me boss, akere kadi kha gala, eh, mo yolo ha okha gala. Eh, runak ka na ko eri tso la ko pa no, horu reskaya lo lo lo.
Greetings to the councillor, speaker. And then thank you very much. And we are actually coming to a close. This brings us to a close of our gathering. And then we don't want to eh speak more than what we have already said, but we want to thank everyone here present.
Ra lebo.
Thank you.
Me bossa re likana la 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 na le mo li tele, um, le ska twenye.